Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 14th, 2025, City of Morro Bay Regular Council Meeting. Happy New Year to you all. City Clerk, if you can establish a quorum with a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Echols.
Here.
Councilmember Landrum.
Here.
Councilmember LaFaye.
Here.
Mayor Potem Edwards.
Here.
And Mayor Wixson.
Here. And this evening, for a moment of silence, I just would like to reflect and share with everyone our thoughts from the City of Morro Bay and from all of us on what's going on down in Los Angeles right now with all of the fire disaster and let them know that we are all thinking of them and our thoughts and prayers are with them. Thank you. With that, I will ask the Fire Chief to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Thank you, everyone. With that, for those of you who have not met our interim, Mr. Schultz is our interim city attorney, will be helping us transition over the next several months. And he's been with the city before. We welcome him. We are appreciative of having him here. And with that, Mr. Schultz, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Yes, good evening. Prior to tonight's regular session, council met in closed session on two properties. The two properties were located at 501 in Barcadero and 341 in Tescadero. As to both those items under real property negotiations, no action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act. The third item was the evaluation of the interim city attorney. As to that item, no action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you. And Mr. Schultz, any very short comment or anything to share with the community?
It's a little surreal, but it's a blessing. During my entire 35-year career, the 13 years I spent here are both dear and near to me in one of the best cities I've ever worked for. So I enjoy being back. It's only for a three- to six-month period to help bridge this gap, hold down the fort, and find you guys a city attorney that can be here for another 13 to 15 years.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. With that, we'll move into Mayor and Councilmember Reports, Announcements, and Presentations. I'm going to kick off real quick because we have a lot to do tonight. We're going to be appointing advisory board members, so we have a long night. Again, thank you all for being here and Happy New Year. The Fire Chief will be providing a brief update for us in a few minutes on the LA fires and the deployment from our city staff that's down there. This coming weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, is the Morro Bay Bird Festival, so a lot of activities going on. Hopefully, you can join in. It looks like the weather will be nice and not raining. Next week, four of us will be attending the California Cities Training League of Cities Conference in Sacramento, so we'll be reporting back to you after returning from that. Hopefully, we're going to get some good updates on all the changes in rules and regulations for the state that pertain to the city. The January 24th and 25th is the CIT Wrestling Tournament, where Morro Bay High School hosts hundreds of wrestling teams. So there will be a lot of youth in our community and a lot going on down at the high school if anyone wants to check that out. And coming off of vacation or a month off, we didn't have a lot of meetings. I just met with Slocog last week and was appointed Vice President of Slocog for this year. So I am always proud to serve the City of Morro Bay and work collaboratively with the other six cities and our five supervisors in the county to do regional transportation and projects. So we'll get direct reporting as soon as I get to the next meeting and bring back what's going on. So with that, I will go to my right and hand it over to Councilmember Landrum.
Well, I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I guess we already did. Did we? Is this our first meeting since? Yeah, Happy New Year to everyone. Happy 2025. I don't have a lot to report out other than I attended the Ocean Protection Council's Listening Session that was held at the Natural History Museum. It was really well-attended with many community members, representatives from the local fishing industry, React Alliance representatives and representatives from Golden State Winds and Invenergy, which are two of the offshore wind leaseholders. There was also former councilmember Jen Ford was there, acting as Dawn Addis's team member. And it really felt like, I have to say, that is a cabinet-level state body, and it felt like the facilitators were really listening to the comments and constructive criticisms that were made. To me, the overarching message was that the agency should make their own decisions based on their designated purpose and not just agree with other state and federal agencies. There was a bit of disappointment that Dawn Addis herself wasn't able to be at the meeting, but she did have a representative there that stayed for a little while. So I think that's all I have to report.
Councilmember LaFaye?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Echols?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I wanted to acknowledge the many emails, phone calls, even texts that I've received and the city has received regarding the potential for catastrophic fire, even in our little town here. And I'm sure that the Fire Chief will be addressing that. So I just wanted to let the residents of Morro Bay know that we hear you. I've been working on, behind the scenes, on an economic vitality plan, and I'll be rolling that out over the next 12 months. But a couple of the things that I've been looking at have been ways that we can beautify our town and gather people around that mission. I've done several business walks downtown with various stakeholders, and those have gone very well. I've been receiving excellent feedback and gaining some enthusiasm from folks, too, about the potential for our downtown as well as waterfront and the businesses around town. Something that's come up quite a bit has been porta-potties. I'm not a big fan of porta-potties in Morro Bay. They stink, literally. And so I'll be examining that more closely as we go forward and looking at surplus properties as well. So these are some of the things that I've been exploring behind the scenes. As a new councilmember, I'm getting my feet underneath me and figuring out how to bring these items before council as a whole and the city manager and move the city forward in those areas. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the first IWMA meeting of the year, the Integrated Waste Management Authority, on the 8th. And I was a part of a very interesting group. They were very welcoming to me as a new member. And we spent two hours there. We reviewed the mid-year budget approval. And also something that was of interest to me and I think to my councilmember colleague here, Landrum, was a set of grant money that's being actually producing for videos to educate the communities in our county with regard to recycling, among other things. And what I found completely, I guess, surprising for me was that a survey done in 2024 showed that most people were very skeptic about recycling. And so therefore, a large amount of people just don't do it at all. And I found that surprising. And I think what I wanted to share with you all tonight, if you're not aware of it, is that we actually, plastics is another thing that you can recycle, if you don't know that. Plastic bags, the plastic little pieces on items that you get at the store or from a food place, you can rinse those out and bring those to Albertsons here locally, if you didn't know that, Home Depot, Target. So I want to personally try to encourage people, if you didn't know that you could do that already, you can, and it's a great way to help with, you know, our environment. I also threw myself out in the ring, hopefully, this will be a good thing, as a member of ad hoc team that's going to be taking a look at their 2021 strategic plan review. And so I'm looking forward to being a part of that. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to City Manager Kimball.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And with, I, first, I want to yield some of my time to the Fire Chief because we have important updates regarding the fires. Chief, please.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Are you able to hear me okay? Okay. Try to make this brief. I've been asked to give an update on the fire situation down in LA and then an update on the items that we're doing here locally to prepare. So currently, there's three large active fires down in the Los Angeles area. As of this morning, the Palisades Fire in the cities of Pacific Palisades and Malibu, currently 23,713 acres, and it's about 17% contained. There's been 1,280 structures destroyed and another 204 damaged. Currently, there's eight civilian fatalities and three civilian injuries reported on that fire. We have a task force. Task Force 1474 includes one engine from Morro Bay Fire Department down there on that incident. They've been assigned and doing structure protection, mop-up and tactical patrols through the neighborhood. So they go through an area that's been burned over, and they'll go through and try to put fires out before they spread into the structures to try to save structures. They're anticipating more red flag wind conditions this week, so they're being held down there to continue, depending on what the fire behavior does. The Eaton Fire in the city of Altadena, just north of Pasadena, we have engineer Mike Kelly assigned to that fire as a fire line paramedic. This incident is about 14,117 acres and currently 35% contained. On this one, there's been about 2,700 structures lost and 329 damaged. With the latest update, with 15 civilian fatalities. There's also been five firefighter injuries reported on this incident. The Hearst Fire, northern portion of San Fernando, we don't have any personnel assigned to this incident. It's currently 799 acres and about 97% contained. No reports of structures lost or fatalities on that incident. There's a couple other small ones that they're getting a handle on down there as well, but those are the three notable. For us, we've been doing a lot of mitigation here in the area. One of the big ones that we do is our annual weed abatement program, and that's usually done around the 15th of June each year. And we have some guidelines. We clear annual grasses and weeds on empty lots to no more than four inches high by mowing or weed eating. The requirements to remove dead brush, tree limbs, excess trash, wood, and other combustibles from residents. Side yards and backyards are also supposed to be cleaned up. All the cuttings are supposed to be removed or scattered if you're weed eating, scattered as long as they won't blow into the roadway or onto adjoining properties. We go through and inspect. We do approximately 4,200 inspections annually on public and private properties. This year, the department issued eight citations and was able to achieve full compliance from property owners through our weed abatement program. Nuisance weeds, brush, debris that don't constitute an immediate danger to the public are to be cleaned up during the weed abatement period. If we do identify something that's an immediate hazard, we can require that to be cleaned up at any time during the year. Just a second here. Some other actions that we've taken last year to mitigate fire risk in the community, including maintaining, cleaning, and painting all the fire hydrants within the city this summer. Our seasonal firefighter program went through, cleaned, lubricated, painted, checked all the fire hydrants throughout the entire city. We've also worked with the Fire Safe Council to remove brush and weeds from along Quintana Road. We're also in the process of working with state parks to do another hazard fuel mitigation project on Cerrito Peak. This one, we're trying to coordinate with the availability of the crew in between the monarch butterfly season and the various bird nesting seasons. So logistically, it's a little bit more difficult to coordinate that one, but it's in the works. During the summertime, in addition to the fuel reduction projects, we increase our staffing with seasonal firefighters. It allows us more personnel to respond to fires and also support the mutual aid responses throughout the state. And that allows us to also ensure we have adequate coverage here in the city while supporting those other fires. This year, we added a wildland fire engine to our fleet. It's the first time that the city's had a wildland engine, so it just increases our capabilities for that type of response. The city is currently updating our local hazard mitigation plan. It's part of San Luis Obispo County's Mutual Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. What this plan does is identifies hazards in the community and then outlines potential mitigation efforts that can be done to help reduce those impacts. The county hosted a public workshop today. One was this afternoon. There's a second one tentatively scheduled for May. We posted that information on our social media page, and the county shared that out through various media platforms. I do have a flyer on the table in the back, and we'll be sharing it via social media. The county is soliciting public input for the hazard mitigation plan so that the community can provide input onto that plan for Morro Bay specifically. They want to hear from all the different residents. One of the other big things is that we have partnered with the County of San Luis Obispo on an evacuation zone project. I did a presentation to council a while back about know your evacuation zone. This is all part of this disaster planning. Having people go to readyslow.org, they can look up what zone they're in, and it also gives a lot of information on preparing for disasters. In the event of an evacuation, one of the things we advise people to do is, you know, have a go-bag and a plan, and we recommend the six Ps. People and pets, so have a plan for all the people and pets, including food and water for each. Papers and plastic, items such as birth certificates, passports, social security cards, IDs, insurance paperwork, and credit and debit cards. Precious items, your pictures, jewelry, and family heirlooms that can be easily taken. Prescriptions, so you want your medications, glasses, medical devices. Personal electronics, cell phones, laptops, and hard drives, and practical clothing. You should have a change of clothes for each person, a jacket, and comfortable shoes. We also recommend that each household has food and supplies on hand to be self-sufficient for a minimum of 72 hours in the event of a shelter-in-place order or other disaster that impacts emergency services. The Fire Department is constantly taking steps to improve fire safety through partnerships with regional resources, hazard mitigation projects, training, and equipment. But it does take the whole community to participate in emergency preparedness. A couple other items that we've done, we're also partnering with state parks to do some hazard fuel mitigation in the Black Hills area. I know that specifically is a concern for the community because of the fire threat there. They have a four-year plan for hazard mitigation in there, and we partner with them to do fuel projects and control burns, and that helps reduce the fire risk in that area. So we've taken quite a few steps, but we're looking for, you know, we're always looking for new ways to expand. And hopefully, that helps put the community's mind at ease that we're doing everything we can to be prepared, you know, to prevent these types of disasters here.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. And I would encourage any of the community who has other questions or uncertainties on that to please feel free to reach out to the Fire Department for information. City Manager Kimball?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple important news to share. First one, I wanted to tell the public, the council and the public, we're really pleased that our business license services are going to be brought back in-house. And the Finance Director and his, and her team has been working really hard to get this together, and that they're still doing some analysis. But at this point, we are looking at April. Beginning of April, we're going to do this in-house. The Finance Structure will bring a more detailed analysis and the cost impact, perhaps at the mid-year budget review, which is coming up in February. And then the second thing I wanted to make a note of is regarding the letter the city sent out to San Luis, San Luis Obispo School District regarding the More Elementary School property. And this letter dated January 7th, 2025 is posted on the city website, so the public can review that. The letter is, this letter sent it out following the council's, a council meeting in December. I wanted to give some context to that letter. The school district has decided to formally dispose of the More Elementary School property and offer the city the opportunity to purchase it based on the highest and the best evaluation from the district 2024 appraisal. I'm not, I cannot, I don't feel comfortable release that information as we are not owner of that property, and the city do not want to dispose that, disclose that appraisal information. However, based on that offer, the city council considered that offer and the public comments, council decided not to make an offer at that time due to the terms presented by the district. But the city, we also acknowledge our role in the local land use authority. We are the local land use authority of the property. And the city council had made very clear that the city desires to continue collaborating with the district to optimize the site potential. With that, Mayor had made a suggestion, which we included in the letter, the city is going to host an information session in January, late January or February. We are working with the school board to, the school district to come up the date, right, to form the date. And then the public is invited. So that's on the letter.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball, and thank you, Mr. Singwald, for working on that to bring that forward. We'll have discussion on that later. Thank you to the Finance Department. We've been hoping that we'd be able to bring those business licensing back. So thank you to you and your team, Emily. Appreciate that. Subcommittee reports?
Mayor, okay. On a Subcommittee Report, a Subcommittee has not met. However, we do have some reports on each items on the Wharf Water Reclamation Facility and Morro Bay Caucas Senatorate District, JPA. A Subcommittee meeting is going to be scheduled sometime in late January. The Public Works Director is working on that at this moment. And then the Community Development Director has some updates on both the Morro Bay Power Plant and as well as the Downtown Design District. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a very brief update on the Vistra Subcommittee in Downtown Design District. So as far as... Is this better? The mic is not working very well. All right, so I'll speak up. So for Vistra, so staff sent Vistra a letter on January 2nd that responds to Vistra's October 2024 letter that indicated they intend to pause their application with the city and pursue the AB 205 Opt-in Certification Program through the CEC. That letter is posted on the Community Development Department's website for the Vistra project. As far as Downtown Design District, so my update is there is a meeting scheduled with the council Subcommittee, so councilmembers Landrum and Edwards, to discuss and plan for the logistics for the Downtown Design District public forum. That concludes my updates.
Okay. And Mayor, we also have a brief update on the offshore wind and energy. The Harbor Intel Director have a few words on that.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The city continues to be involved with the county-led Mott McDonald Study. The city's recent meetings of the study have involved mapping and gathering basic information about the, of the harbor and the city. According to the San Luis Obispo Tribune, Equinor, or Atlas Windows it's known, has ceased offshore activity on the central coast until at least the middle of 2025. The other two developers, Ocean Wind and Inven, Invenergy, plan to continue with the projects. The city continues to attend meetings and webinars related to offshore wind. On a related note, for the Chumash Heritage National Marine Sanctuary, they've set out notice that they're forming an advisory board. Applications are available online right now, and I'll be applying for the position related to ports and harbors. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. And hopefully, our Harbor Advisory Board will have somebody from the fishing community apply for that spot also with the sanctuary. With that, we're moving on to City of Morro Bay Years of Service Awards. With great pleasure, yeah.
Mayor, you're absolutely correct. With great pleasure, I would like to present everybody this is Years of Service Awards for 2024. And then... First come up is 10 Years of Service. And we have Gina Arias. And Gina works at the Public Works Department. She is the administrative technician. I'm not sure if folks have met her, but she does a lot of work. And one thing is personal to me is that sometimes the city manager have days that she doesn't really quite like. And I go to Gina's office, and then I'll get a perspective from her, and she will tell me about her day. And then I just felt, oh, wow, I have the best job in the world. So thank you, Gina. And now coming up, Eli Hunter. He is a Public Works Consolidated Maintenance Worker. Eli seems, Eli and I run into each other usually in the evening. When I leave in the office, go back to work, go back to home, leaving work, go back to home. And Eli, I can see him getting things ready, getting the city hall offices cleaned up so that ready for the next day. So we really appreciate Eli's contribution. And here we go. This is one of the rock stars in the City of Morro Bay, Captain Tony Mosquita. And the Chief, Chief Amy Watkins, the right-hand man. Tony is quite talented. He is not only an excellent police commander, he also is a fantastic cook. I had a pleasure to try his fried turkey to thank the gaming, and it was so delicious. I know he has other talents, but I think I just, I wanted to, I don't want to share all his secrets with everybody. Okay, moving on. Okay. And those are the 10-year employees, and now we have 15 years of service. First, we have Alex Tapia. And he is utility operator. And he has multiple certification, and this multiple certification program is an innovative approach that the city's utility division implemented. Saves some money because I, because it's very difficult to find operators who are state-certified. And we, doing the multi-ser program allows, one employee can be certified for both water and sewer, and thereby can, they can fill in for each other, and then that bring efficiency. And Alex is one of the great examples for that program. And then we're moving on to 30 years of service, which is a grand prize. Janine. And Janine has been with the city for 30 years. Can you believe that? Janine, please, please stand up. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you, Janine. Janine, I, Janine is a historian of the city, and even our beloved city clerk sometime have to ask Janine, oh, what is this, where is that she? Yeah, so she just knows every corner of the city, what happened. So she is such a valuable person for the city, and we're so proud that Janine had completed her 30 years of service to the city. And we're so proud that Jeanine had completed her 30 years of service to the city. So I had, those are remark, those are the examples of our remarkable employees that working day in and day out to provide services to our citizens, our businesses and our, and our visitors. Without them, things would not be able to be done. So I, I am just, yeah, I'm just thrilled to be able to have the opportunity to showcase some of them. Our average years of service for our, our employees is seven, seven years, seven and a half years. So for these, those few individuals I just presented tonight, they are really the cream of the, the top of cream. So we are really proud of them. And thank you so much, everybody, for allowing me the opportunity.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. And thank you, Ms. Berlin Game, and to all the others and, and those who have not hit those milestones. We look forward to celebrating them with you through the years. I also see, I want to acknowledge that our on-duty fire crew, I believe is in the back of the room back there. Are you guys back there still? You stand up. Or not? Thank you. Thank you. We are very proud of our city staff. I have a proclamation. This evening, we'd like to recognize, the city of Morro Bay would like to recognize Big Brothers and Big Sisters of San Luis Obispo County during National Mentoring Month on their 30th anniversary and for their quality youth mentoring programs. Whereas Big Brothers and Big Sisters of San Luis Obispo County's mission is to create and support one-to-one mentoring relationships to ignite the power and promise of you. And whereas Big Brothers and Big Sisters of San Luis County has provided 30 years of life-changing mentoring programs that promote education, healthy relationships, positive self-esteem, and lifelong growth. And whereas Big Brothers and Big Sisters Volunteers Mentors have improved the lives of more than 4,000 local children since opening in 1995. And whereas Big Brothers and Big Sisters mentoring programs are an evidence-based prevention program with statistically significant effectiveness at reducing drug use and violence and improving youth mental health and academic performance. Whereas 98% of the children in Big Brothers and Big Sisters program graduate from high school and 75% continue to their post-high school education. And whereas volunteer mentors and professional staff support family wellness and ensure that child safety standards are met. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of San Luis Obispo County's volunteers invested over 19,200 hours of volunteer time in 2024, which is valued at $643,000 by the independent sector. Whereas Big Brothers and Big Sisters of San Luis Obispo County has been honored with numerous awards by Big Brothers, Big Sisters of America, including the prestigious 2023 Growth Award. Whereas the county of San Luis Obispo formally recognizes the month of January as National Mentoring Month and embraces the vision that all children should have, that all children should achieve their full potential. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby recognize Big Brothers and Big Sisters of San Luis Obispo County on their 30th anniversary year for the quality youth mentoring programs that they provide for the children and families of San Luis Obispo County. I'd like to invite Araceli, I hope I said that right, Flores up. Thank you. From Big Brothers and Big Sisters. Thank you, Araceli.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Araceli Flores and I'm very proud to be here today representing Big Brothers and Big Sisters. First, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to Mayor Carla Wixom and the city council for this proclamation. National Mentor Month holds special meaning, not just for me, but for all of us who believe in the power of mentorship. Mentorship is more than just offering guidance. It's about building connections, nurturing growth, and empowering youth to reach their fullest potential. It's about being a steady presence in someone's life, whether it's showing them a new perspective, providing a word of encouragement, or offering a helping hand during difficult times. I've been fortunate to witness the transformative impact that a strong mentorship relationship can have, not only on those we mentor, but also on ourselves. Through these relationships, we become better listeners, learners, and leaders. We realize that every conversation, every shared experience holds the power to shape a life. I want to honor all of the mentors and mentees in our community. To the mentors who give us their time and their hearts. To the mentees who embrace the lessons and opportunities with open minds and courage. Together, we create a ripple effect that reaches beyond individuals and into our neighborhoods, schools, and organizations. The work we do today echoes into the future, helping to create stronger, more connected communities for years to come. Finally, I encourage everyone to consider becoming a mentor in this new year. Remember that each of us has the ability to make a difference. You don't have to have all the answers to be a mentor. You just have to be willing to listen, share, and walk alongside someone as they grow. It truly takes little to be big. Thank you again for this important proclamation. I look forward to continuing our work together to support, guide, and inspire the next generation of leaders. And a very big thank you to you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your work. With that, we are going to move into, excuse me, got a frog tonight or something, public comment. And I'm going to start with John Denunzio from Slocog. After that, I'm going to call out your names. For those of you who signed up for one minute, I'll take you first. And because of the volume of speaker slips, we'll only be offering two minutes this evening to the others. Thank you, Mr. Denunzio.
Good evening, Mayor Wixom and City Council. I'm John Denunzio, Slocog staff. As you know, San Luis Obispo Council of Government works with regional transportation, policy planning, and state and federal programming, along with our rideshare division and our sister agency, RTA, to improve surface transportation and quality of life and economy in our county, including the city of Morro Bay. I wanted to briefly share with you and the public about a new planning process underway called the Morro Bay Estuary Climate Resiliency Transportation Plan. The focus impacts on sea level rise on South Bay Boulevard between Los Osos and Morro Bay, but it also includes spurs along Quintana Road, Lower State Park Road, from the Inn at Morro Bay, around the Marina Campground to Twin Bridges and a segment at Torrey Road. This project opportunity came up as the county Public Works is preparing to replace the South Bay Boulevard Bridge at Los Osos Creek. And then the atmospheric river happened of 2023 and Choro Creek flooded at Quintana Road in South Bay, along with many other parts of the city, and the city declared an emergency. So a year ago, Caltrans had a planning grant notice funding opportunity along with the city Public Works Department, Estuary Program, Resource Conservation District, Los Osos CSD, State Parks, and County of Slow. We, Slocog, applied and were awarded a $400,000 grant in order to plan, along with partners, the first steps to improving mobility options between the communities, as well as examine the wetland habitats and the impacts of high estuary tide levels and high creek flows resulting in greater floodings of these areas. On October 21st, the project team, we held a field walk and then along with staff. And on December 3rd, between Thanksgiving and the holidays, we held our first public workshop, which was attended by about 100 people, many from Los Osos. So I regret not coming sooner to this council with a similar three-minute public announcement informing you and the Morro Bay public about this meeting in advance and for any frustration this might have caused at that time. To that end, a first public meeting did happen and the resources and materials can be found at sbbclimitplan.org or southbayboulevardclimatplan.org. We are still in the public engagement process in, of this in the existing conditions phase, and we will be through the end of March. In the meantime, we'll be setting up an information and resources booth at the Morro Bay Main Street Farmers Market this Saturday and another Saturday in January, February. And we're also planning a second workshop in April, May, and we'll work with staff to identify a suitable Morro Bay venue to conduct the second workshop. Perhaps we can do an item at one of the committee meetings. So in the meantime, my information, jdenunzio@slocog.org on Slocog's website, slocog.org.
Thank you. Mr. Denunzio, can I ask a question that was asked of me before you leave? Emergency Service Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan. How can people find the information to take the survey on that?
So that, that plan is not a Slocog-led plan?
Oh, it's not Slocog. Okay.
No, no, we only recently found about, about that plan ourselves.
Okay. So that would be why we can't find the information on the Slocog side. Okay. Thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question, Mr. Denunzio? You brought up the flooding and the state of emergency in Morro Bay and one of the most, it was terrible. And one of the most critical issues was the, the freeway wasn't accessible. And does Slocog have any, or the highway, does Slocog have any, anything to do with maybe mitigating that?
Well, the plan is being funded by Caltrans. So they have a big stake in keeping that interchange open at South Bay Boulevard and the access at the end, the south end of Quintana. So, yeah.
Well, we can reach out, excuse me, to get that information from you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I can answer your question regarding the, the public survey. I have some flyers at the back table with the QR code for it, and we'll get the information posted on the city website and social media tomorrow.
Thank you, sorry. With that, we're going to move to public comment. I have several speaker slips. I'm going to call up the few speaker slips that are signed up for one minute. After that, everyone else will be two minutes. Many of you are here to talk about Morro Elementary School Site Property. Again, the city manager shared with you that there, for those of you who saw the website, you saw we have a letter posted there. There's copies of the letter in the back. And again, I'm just going to reiterate for you a few things. One, Morro Bay, just because there's some information out there, does not, the city of Morro Bay does not own that property. First of all, the school district owns it because there's been some confusion. I think people who are getting some of this information believe the city owns it. We do not own it. Again, in the letter, while we're not currently in a position to proceed with the purchases offered, we, we want to highlight that, you know, we do have a role in that and that we want to continue to collaborate with the district to optimize the potential for the site, for the betterment of our collective community. And again, it was shared that the city has decided to host an information session the end of this month, the 1st of February, where our staff is working with the school district staff to try and provide a date and time when we can and give the community information as, again, it is not a city-owned property. And so I just want to share that with you as you come up tonight. We did not say no. We just cannot entertain an offer at their highest price. With that, the first speaker slip I have is Lucy Conklin, followed by David Smith, and those are both for one minute.
Hi, I'm Lucy Conklin. I'm from Los Osos and I'm here because of the Morro Elementary School potential sale. I only found out about it yesterday and I learned a lot just listening to what was being said this evening. Having said that, I just want to emphasize how important I feel the programs are that exist there. I currently take my granddaughter to the cooperative preschool where I volunteer. And last year, I also did the planned, the parent participation program. I know now that you do not own the property and I guess you don't have a say-so? Or do you have any say-so in what happens to the programs that are already there in case the property gets sold? I mean, that's a big concern because again, these programs are excellent and they impact so many people of the community.
I'm David Smith and I am here in support of the Family Partnership Charter School. My daughter is in her second year here and she has shown significant improvements in her attitude and her behaviors about school. She is very smart. She is also very strong-willed and so she struggles with authority and expectations. Here, she has gained an awareness for her actions and a maturity towards what is expected of her. I believe she is much better equipped for what lies ahead as she goes to junior high next year. And that is why I'm here today, because there's other kids like my daughter, like myself, who stand a better chance to succeed in life if they have this kind of scholastic support. So please consider the school, the children, and the community when you're making your decision. I know that our amendment is we're just asking for more time. So, thank you.
Next up is Steve Page, followed by Nicole Dorfman, followed by Shai Gardner. Nicole Dorfman. Followed by Shai Gardner.
Hello, good evening. I do have a graphic I'd like to have up. I am not here to speak about Morro Elementary, but I do support the notion of taking a little bit of time to see if the community can, can raise, rise to the occasion. My name is Nicole Dorfman and I am here as a representative of React Alliance. We are a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to stopping offshore wind energy on the central coast. On Saturday, this Saturday, beginning at noon at Morro Rock, there will, we will be hosting a National Day of Action event in coordination with many other entities on the East Coast. And it's, this is being coordinated through a national organization called the National Offshore Wind Opposition Alliance, or NOWAY. And the local event will be hosted by React Alliance. I believe we are the only event on the West Coast, although there are numerous ones on the East Coast in Virginia, New Jersey, New York, Massachusetts, all over the place. They are much further along in this process than we are. And, you know, I'm grateful that we've learned from them how much we do not want it. So this event is called End It. We are calling out to President-elect Trump to keep his word to end the subsidies for offshore wind and end the government facilitation of this. We believe without the money from the government, this energy, offshore wind energy falls flat on its face that it is not economical without all those subsidies. Anyways, there's going to be music, there's going to be speakers, there's going to be a march. So please come and join us and, and help protect our town and our community. And it's just going to be a fun event. So we hope to see you there. Thank you.
My name is Shai Gardner and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Morro Bay Elementary topic this evening. I want to start off by saying thank you for your consideration and your time and your information this evening. I think the whole community feels more well-equipped as we move forward. Our daughter does attend the Family Partnership. So I am here as a parent this evening to urge you guys to really take your time and to really think out the effect of what it's going to be for our community moving forward. We are like a family at Family Partnership. We are not misnamed at all. We take it very seriously. Our children's education, it is the foundation to their futures. I am a third-generation native of the central coast. My children are fourth generation here. So I have seen my whole lifetime beautiful changes, but I have also seen as the mom of five, whoo, sorry, had to take a breath, the mom of five, how important the role of education is for my children, for our children. And I know a lot of you feel just as special about this community. And I know that you will definitely make the decision regardless of the amount that will be in the best interest. And I really look forward to seeing that space utilized for not only education, but arts and all the wonderful things that we promote here. We have people that come visit from all over the world and I would like for us to continue to have beautiful, wonderful, special things to engage those that visit here and also support those that live here. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Next up, I have David Yo, followed by Joan Solo, followed by Jody Peterson.
Good evening. My name is David Yo. I live in Morro Bay. Less than a year ago, I came before you, the council, and requested a ceasefire. Less than a year ago, I came before you, the council, and requested a ceasefire agreement. It was beyond your capabilities at that time. I spoke to the supervisors, slow supervisors, this morning on the same topic. They refused as well. There are a lot of children who did not get to go to their graduation this year. Many of them did not have their first birthday. It's hurtful to think that we, this community, could not stand up and tell governments of the world that this kind of behavior, bombing schools, bombing hospitals, killing aid workers, is not acceptable. But we encourage it. Your silence has encouraged it. And I'm really, really sorry to have to come back. I hope that in the future, our educational system will not be inundated by the ADL and the Jewish Caucus, California Jewish Caucus, to teach our children to have the mentality that creates this. Don Attis tried to pass a bill, 2819, AB 2819, that would create sociocide, that would eliminate the Palestinian people from the educational system. If a child goes to school, one of these children goes and says, hey, why do, asks a teacher, why do Israeli soldiers sodomize their captives? Why? Please, don't let this happen here.
First of all, thank you very much for serving. I haven't welcomed some of you to the council. And I haven't been here in a number of years. I take my time really seriously. So for me to get out of the house tonight to come before you, well, I respect you for what you're doing.
My name is Joan Solo and I'm a 27-year resident of Morro Bay. Eighty-eight point five years ago, on Tuesday morning, March 11th, 1936, everything changed for generations of schoolchildren in Morro Bay. That was when actual work on Morro Elementary began. The San Luis Obispo newspaper at one point reported that the building was to be modern in every respect and that the project would have roads leading to the center of it from all directions. The bid, 45% of the cost to supplement the bid, was paid by the federal government of $34,000. The total project was $52,000. That is actual history. History is not emotional. It's factual. And preservation can happen in this community alongside of progress. Those two things can coexist with community support, city support, and support from foundations and organizations. It's important that we preserve our history in this community. We just heard a speaker who's had their family here for five generations. There are others here for four and longer. I'm thankful that you wrote your letter to the school district and that you're asking for some time for our community to study this issue. If it's possible at that meeting, I'd like to see the city go a little bit further and supply maybe a list of surplus properties and some ideas of ways that the community and the city can work together to create a bandwidth for preserving that property. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jody Peterson. And I really enjoyed hearing what you had to say and explain some things to the community. I just moved back to this community three weeks ago. I've been gone for 30 years. I was born and raised here. None of us here were present when this land property was given to the city to be used as a school. But my grandfather was. He was on the school board. He told me when I was a young girl and met Quintana family members, he told me that the Quintana family gave this property to Morro Bay to be used as a school only for the community. And if the property was never to, was not to be used as a school, it should be given back to the Quintana family. My grandpa heard this from the Quintana family members that gave this property to Morro Bay. I don't know where it's written down. I don't have the money to search that out. I'd like that to be considered in the transactions with the San Luis School District and Morro Bay. Honestly, it would be wonderful if the city would buy it and continue using it as a place of education, growth, community building. My mother was an elementary school teacher there for 20 years. My father went to that school the first year that it opened. My sister and I both went to that school from kindergarten through sixth grade. It's really a meaningful place, not just in my family, but in so many families in this community. I can't go anywhere with my mom, not to the grocery store, not to the blood lab, without somebody coming up and saying, hey, I was a student in your school. Or even people say, my brother or sister was a student in your school. I just, I just want to speak for the people that are not here today because they're no longer living, that witnessed how this gift was given to this community. And I don't want it to be taken away. So thank you for your time.
I have one more speaker slip. Sumay Torres. After that, public comment is open to those who did not provide speaker slips.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Sumay Torres. I'm also here in support of the, of the city in some way acquiring the property from the school district. I understand that the school district timeline has been quite short and the school, the city hasn't had, in my opinion, a proper opportunity to look at all of the, all of the options. So I am here in, also requesting that the city work with the school district, as you already are and we're thankful for that, to find more time and see what is possible, working with the community. I know, obviously, we can see the community feels really strongly about the school, not only for the history behind it, but the programs that are involved there. I want to add in, it's an amazing opportunity for the city to have a space. If the city offices were there and have a combination of the use of that, an additional auditorium space for events, the fields for, continue the soccer programs that are going on and whatever uses are necessary. Of course, I'm biased. I am the site coordinator at the Morro Bay Free Montessori Elementary School that operates on the site and rents from the school district. We have a tremendous interest, obviously, in keeping our school going. But I didn't want to focus just on that. That is, that is a very important part of it. But it is an amazing opportunity for the community. In closing, it's, it's really looking at either a tragic loss or, like I said, an amazing opportunity to keep everything going, the history and the programs, as well as future uses. The comparison is so stark that it warrants careful consideration and bringing the community together to make it possible. Thank you very much.
What a great way to start the year off. I'm sorry. Mayor, City Council, and Rob, good seeing you again. It's been a long time. Oh, man. And our great police department and fire department and the worker bees of our city. We forgot to mention, and I wasn't going to talk tonight, and then I said, this is our annual bird festival. This is a big one. It's been going on since I can remember, 25 years, 20 years. 750 birders are here, spending money at hotels, restaurants, enjoying our city. And we got 125 internationally-known birders, internationally-known. And I'm participating. I'm going to be involved in about four or five different programs that they have. There's over two, about 300 different events, I think, close to 400, I think. If you go to, it's a website, not an app, so you got to sign in. So, because I've made the mistake, thought it was an app. So anyway, it's going to be, it's robo, R-O-B-O, no, excuse me, Now, when you sign in, then you're automatically in the system. Then you go to the internet and you can look at from 100, 200, 300, and 400 series. Now, there's still some openings. There's things for kids there, all of that. And you'll know on, when you look at the site, it'll say there's three openings or one opening or 10 openings or whatever. Or you can go there Thursday morning at 6 o'clock till about 5:00, where you can sign up if there, if you want to do that. But, and also, there's other things too. If you want to go to the, to the reception, you have to sign in to the reception because they don't want anybody coming in or that, okay. Whoa, hey, that was a quick two minutes. Y'all have a good one now.
Hello, my name is Tru Reese and I, my dad and my sister went to this school and I've been at this school for four years. It's a great school. I see some teachers out there, Mrs., Ms., Mr. Sumay, Ms. Diana and Ms. Yoshie, and some parent volunteers. I've learned so much at this school and I would really like it to stay. Thank you.
My name's Debbie Hyphill. That was my grandson. I'm a retired elementary school teacher. I also have a training in Montessori education. And I would like to speak, I understand that the city's not interested in buying the property. What my plea is, is that we're given more time, 90 to 180 days is what I'm thinking, so that we can look into grants and fundraising. And the reason I'm so attached to having this particular program continue, it's very unique. We've got the preschool program. We have the special ed program. And this is the only public Montessori school that I know of in the county. And Tru didn't mention it, but the values that he was telling me that he feels that he has learned by going to that unique school really warmed my heart. It's a non-competitive, peaceful approach, cooperative approach. To say it's child-centered is a miss, you know, an understatement. The children are so enthused and choose enthusiastically what they want to study. And there's nothing else like it. And so this is a real gift to our community. And if we could be just given the gift of time to regroup about how we might apply for a grant and present a plan back to you, that would be a great gift. Thank you.
I've never done this before. I'm James Moore. I'm also in, here in support of the Morro Bay school site. And I just wanted to say ditto to everything that has been said regarding that, the extra time and all of those things. I'd also like to highlight what you said, Jeff, about, about finding ways to vital, revitalize or, or, you know, expand on the specialness of this town. That's a very special site. And the possibilities that that place espouses for the city of Morro Bay, for all of the possibilities that could, I mean, with a creative mind, that place could explode for the city in ways much farther, way beyond what it already is. And I think the fact that the city would bypass such an opportunity is perhaps somewhat, somewhat shortsighted. And so I challenge you to consider, reconsider, you know, this, this option or this opportunity. The other thing I would like to say is that maybe it's going through your mind that the programs that are held at that, that location could move elsewhere. And while that's true, a place is often a part of the culture of a thing or an entity. And you remove that, that entity from that place and it changes the culture. And there's been, I don't know, what is it, two decades, Sumay? Of, of development of a culture at that place. And so please keep that in mind also while you're going forward with this decision. Thank you.
My name is Monty Moore and I also go to the school. I just, I don't know what would happen if the school stops. I love this school. I'm in my third year. It's the best school I've ever went to. I love the teachers. I love all my friends that go there. I've met so many new people that are just great. I, I just love the school. Thank you.
Hang on a second, Michelle.
Yeah.
Thank you to all the kids who are coming up and speaking. We appreciate it and applaud you for that. If I could ask the rest, please don't clap, just wave. We're all supportive of them being here. Thank you.
I'm not here to talk about the school. I'm here to discuss the current situation down in LA and the wildfires that are burning our communities. I have huge concerns about our community of Morro Bay. In the past, I've spoken about the concern of having wood-burning fire pits in our community. Numerous cities in California, numerous California camping, state camping beaches have banned wood burning. They have asked that everybody use propane as opposed to wood-burning fires. Avalon, Cardiff State Beach, Carlsbad, the Bay Area does not allow wood burning during "spare the air" alerts because of the fine particles that cause severe health issues to lungs and asthma. I think that with the situation in LA, the fact that our city and community is against the beach like Lihue, Hawaii, we have to worry about this. There is currently a 15 to 25-yard distance required for wood-burning fire pits. And in North Morro Bay, there's not that amount of space to pull a fire pit away from anything combustible, whether it's a house, a fence, bush, anything. All it takes is one ember and that's it. We could lose our town. We have nowhere to run to. And the same could be said about Cayucus. The same could be said for Los Osos. We are in a really unique situation that there's only two ways in and out. And that's, you know, going south or north. I think I've discussed, also speaking with Chief Vera, about, you know, adopting some type of a, either emergency plan or ordinance to, you know, prohibit, especially with the short-term rentals. There's many of those people that come into town and think it's a free-for-all, let's have a big old smore festival, and they burn tons of wood. And it, it's just too close to homes for comfort. Thank you.
My name is Eloise Crowe and I would like the people who would like to go to this school have a chance to. And I would like to finish my two years of school here.
My name is Madison Treber. I have a child who attended Family Partnership. Well, I guess I should start by saying that I'm here in support of Morro Elementary. I'm here in support of Morro Elementary campus. I have a child who attended the program from kindergarten through 5th grade and has since graduated, and another one who is currently there for 3rd grade. Our personal story is that my older child wouldn't have done well in an educational system that was like more traditional. He's neurodivergent, and at the time that he was starting school, I was a single mom in college, and there would have been like no way I could have afforded a private school education for him. So, the Montessori school is a godsend for our family, as well as, I think, for a lot of families who are currently attending there and who will attend there in the future. I was going to say, I think like zooming out a bit, I think it's important for the city to be aware of the fact that American parents are really interested in educational choice at this point in time. Polls have shown that. So, supporting Morro Bay citizens and citizens in our larger counties having educational options is like a huge advantage, and the site enables that. Kind of zooming out even further, I think it's really important for the city to consider that this purchase would demonstrate to citizens a commitment to investing in our community, to supporting the beautiful organizations that are currently housed there, to supporting the maintaining of the historical structure that sits on that site, and also the recreational sites that are available there as well. Failing to support it, I think, sends, you know, an entirely different message that's really stark. So, thank you. I really appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to all of our thoughts tonight.
I'm Nico Torres, and I've went there for four years or so. And my dad is Semu Torres. He's the site coordinator here. So, I really want this place to stay here. So, I always wanted it to be like it is right now, and I want the future kids here to go here when they want to. Thank you.
My, my name is Caleb Crowe, and I've gone to the Family Charter School for like three years, and I've learned so much, and I would really, really love it to stay. Thank you.
Come on up.
I fell in love once. The first time I laid eyes on her, she was practicing archery using a mattress propped up against an RV as a target. When I actually met her, she proudly showed me her Confederate flag pocket knife. I can't tell you how surprised I was to find someone here who felt so much like home. Having her try to remember derogatory slang for any race I could mention was, in a way, amusing, but far more interesting were our disagreements. I would say that racism was utterly ridiculous with no logical basis, besides being morally contemptible. And she would tell me that she didn't hate black and brown people, she just didn't like them when they acted like insert slang here. I'd say that race is a social construct, and she'd say that they needed to act like Americans. Blanqueamiento, I now call it. Our most common disagreement was about the role of violence, whether or not we'd beat our future kids, or whether or not the things we'd been put through as kids in order to better us were just. Our love was doomed, the closet lesbian fascist and the deeply repressed closet queer. We only kissed once. I dreamt that one day she might ask me to love her, and she dreamt that her family would arrange a marriage, and I could be her secret lover. First time she told me this, I was dumbfounded. Marriage is potentially unequal enough, but arranged marriage is literally rape. She looked me straight in the eye and told me she'd gladly be raped every day if it meant her family would be happy. She wanted to be a dog of war but couldn't make it through boot camp. The last I saw her, she was getting ready to head off to pursue her backup career choice, a dog of the state, a cop.
Hi. I just found out about the potential closure of Morro Elementary today. I heard about it from one of my parent friends, and I felt compelled to come straight here from yoga and speak about it. I went to kindergarten there in 1974 with your brother, and I grew up in this town and was lucky enough to move back here as a parent. And my daughter attended the Montessori school that's based on that campus. It was a huge, huge attraction for us to come back there, and I know many families feel the same way, having an alternate school that's available, that is free for kids that have different types of learning levels. So, for me, that was very important, but also just historically, having that campus there, there are so many memories. I know it has supported so many programs over the years, both educational and social. So, to see that be taken away from this town is, I think, would be horrible. And I, I hope that there is a way to somehow keep it. I don't even know what the process is, but I just felt compelled to come and share that with you, because my experience is that it is a very important part of our city and our history and our culture. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Margaret Carmen, and thank you so much to all the children. I have tears in my eyes listening to them. I want to piggyback, I was already going to talk about what the lady said on the front row here, because I want to appeal to the people at the school board, whatever they're called, because they were given that property by the Quintana family. And so, why do they want to charge us top dollar to keep something that should stay in Morro Bay? We've already heard all these reasons. So, I want to put like just prayerful intention out to these people's brains and hearts that they decide, oh gee, we want to facilitate this staying in the, in Morro Bay, and that all these people have these cool groovy ideas of how you guys are going to be able to say yes to keeping it. All right, the second thing I want to talk about is I was listening to the Board of Supervisors today, and the Legislative Liaison was there saying everything going on in Sacramento, how we're $8 billion in debt, and the governor's focused on getting out of the hole, and the government's very, he's very optimistic, and that he's going to give $478 million to offshore wind. He's not looking at how much money does it cost to produce that, how much carbon footprint. It doesn't weigh out, and we've been up here telling you guys all that, but I wanted to say, that's what the governor's doing right now, which is why we need to have everybody. I would love if all the parents would bring the kids to The Rock this Saturday, because they love life and nature, and we want to keep the ocean and Morro Bay and Cayucas and Cambria beautiful and safe for them. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Doug in my closet, Morro Elementary Falcons. It has been about, and it's still fit. It has been about four years since I first heard the rumor of the possible sale of our beloved Morro Elementary. I've not had good reason to pay attention to the San Luis Coastal Unified School District Board meetings as my children graduated about four years ago, 24 years ago. Sorry. I attended the Planning Commission meeting held in Morro Bay at the school, where we toured the site and had cookies and coffee, and listened to very old-timers speak about their experiences at Morro Elementary. And I'm glad that's there for posterity. I also understood there was another meeting at the San Luis Coastal, that they had at the site a few months back, where I was told that the district made a decision that day, when in fact, it was supposedly for information only. A decision made that way is a no-no, as we all should understand. I was super disappointed that this was really never brought up to the forefront for public comment, and it happened during the holidays on both sides. Tonight, we are asking for time to let us come up with a plan on how we can keep Morro Elementary from falling into the hands of developers. How utterly sad would that be? We would like to be given a chance to come up with a plan. Can you help us by notifying the district? Our citizens came up with the idea of raising money and paying for our own city library. It is possible to do something similar. We might need your help with negotiations for city property exchange to lessen the dollar burden. This council has not had this issue very long. Let's get creative. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Hi, Bear Wickson. There is three hands raised. So, phone ending in 046, I will allow you to speak. You can push *6 in order to unmute. Phone number ending in 046, you are allowed to speak. I will swing back to that person. So, the next person will be Vita Miller. I will allow you to talk.
Okay, I'm just unmuted. Yes, I'm Vita Miller. I live in Los Osos. But I am an over 50-year resident, and my two sons attended Morro Bay High School, and they also were active in many of the recreation programs in Morro Bay, because when they were growing up, there were so few in Los Osos. I'm not sure that's changed much. And then I also volunteered at the Senior Center for about three years. So, I've had a close relationship with Morro Bay, and I just became aware about the Morro Elementary School, and that it possibly is going to change hands and no longer be available to the people of the communities around Morro Bay and surrounding Morro Bay. And I think what a wonderful historic building it is, and how sad it would be to let it go. And I think that future generations would be very unhappy to know that there might be an opportunity, that if this Morro Bay City Council chooses to allow an extension and to bring that forth to the San Luis Coastal Unified School District, to allow people to come up with a plan perhaps, and be able to somehow raise enough funds to keep it in the hands of Morro Bay and available as an asset to the community. I think there could be recreation programs added there. I think that it, perhaps, city offices could be moved into that building, and that would make it economical for the city. I don't know, but I think this would require time, and I'm asking that the city council take all that into consideration and to please ask for an extension of time, at least, I think probably six months, to find out if there's a possibility of keeping this resource in the community. So, thank you very much.
Okay, we have 20 people online, so if people wish to speak, it would be great if they could raise their hands. And the next person is Judy Lynn. I will allow her to speak.
Good evening, council. And I just want, I'm Judy, and I've lived in Morro Bay since 67. I have a 50-year-old daughter who went, who started school, her school, at Morro Elementary. It's, I've worked there, it's very dear to me. I appreciate everyone who has spoken about this, and the kids are just wonderful, and I just hope that we all can remember that this is all about the kids and what's best for them in their community. I encourage everyone who is listening and who is working on this to appeal to the school district, to the County Office of Education, to the California State Department of Education, to our Board of Trustees for the school district, over and over again. Ask them for compassion, ask them for the kind of compassion they showed our superintendent, Eric Prater, when he couldn't qualify for a home, and we loaned him $1 million of school district funds, taxpayer money, so that he could buy a home that he really couldn't afford. We need that kind of compassion to keep this beautiful historical, historical building that was made possible by donations from a family and taxpayer funding throughout the years. Everybody, please work hard. City council, please join us in this effort to save and preserve this property. We can, we can actually sell city land, free up city land even where the city hall is right now, and move things there to this property, and make it just a wonderful community effort that enhances our beautiful Morro Bay. Thank you so very much.
Okay, so, phone number ending in 046, I will allow you to talk again. Press *6 in order to unmute.
This is Natalia Unisroyen. I hope everybody can hear what I said.
Yes, we could hear you.
I want to thank you all for everything you're doing every day and week and month of the year, throughout the year. We have a great city council, and I'm, I'm calling to support the idea that Morro Bay be allowed to have some extra time, find a way to retain the school, which is so important. It's, it's almost miraculous that all the things that have happened around it have occurred because Morro Bay didn't have a Montessori school before, now it does. And, you know, I've, I've heard talks in not-too-distant paths, paths of Morro Bay having a new city hall, that the current one wasn't adequate, and, you know, there it is. That, that property has so much potential for so many things, recreationally and for the community, and it's contiguous with the community, um, building there and the Senior Center. It's, it's amazing. So, I, I agree that there are a lot of creative people in the community. We should start some kind of ad hoc committee immediately and get, get to working on it, because this is an engaged community. When they have a will to do something, it tends to happen. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
AGP, are there any more raised hands in the queue?
Yes, Zed's iPhone. I will allow you to talk right now.
Hi, thank you. I appreciate everything you've done. My name is Zed Schla. I moved to Morro Bay with my family three years ago, you know, trying to settle into a community that had substance and roots to it. And our daughter attends the Montessori school in Bay, and I was hesitant with... Bay. And I was hesitant with, you know, my wife looking into options and what was available. But this has truly been a blessing for us to have available for our children. And we have a son going to the Central Coast Montessori Preschool right now, that we would love to be able to fall on the same footsteps in the near future. And it's disappointing that right now, this option is something that is up in the air in limbo for us. And I want to profess, you know, we, we were so fortunate to move to this community when we did. And, and, you know, this is a benefit for us, supporting being here. And, you know, this community does not have jobs to support housing. Let's be real. So, I mean, I'm on the road today. I'm on the road every week, working so that we can afford to live in such a beautiful community and raise children in it. And I would love for this to continue being an option for us on a go-forward basis, as I sit in a car in Salinas right now, listening to this call. So, please, please find some options for us that can continue having the school thrive where it is.
Hi, Mayor. There are no more hands raised.
Thank you, AGP. With that, I will bring it back to city council, since there's no more raised hands. Last round, going, going, gone. All closed public comment. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. I don't think there's any question about the passion and desire and the connections we all have to the school, one way or another, whether it was ourselves, our children, our spouses, our parents. I, at this point, would remind you again that there's a letter back there with information. We are arranging an informational meeting, and I would encourage you, as one of the speakers said, to reach out to your school board members, since they're the owners of the property. And our representative for our district is Marilyn Rogers, but any of the school board members, so that would be, what I would hope you would all do, would be reach out to the school board. But that...
Mayor, I was wanting to make an emergency motion, if I could.
No, we don't have...
There's no opportunity to do that?
A motion for, there's no, there's no item.
Well...
There's no item.
Just in light of the public comment.
There's no item on the agenda. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I will open public comment on the consent agenda. Consent agenda items only. Public comment is open. 7A through 7F.
My name's Betty Winholz. I wanted to speak to item D and E. I wanted to thank Mr. Collicks for his comments regarding the questions that I had on this item. My only last question that was raised in light of your answers was, when will the marketing plan be available? Will that be before or after we sign the document with the, with the county, with the RTA? And with regard to item 7E, one of the jobs that can be assigned to the guys from the CCC or CMC is tree pruning. And this has been a hard row for us the last few months, with some issues with professional tree cutters. And so, I'm wondering if that's an appropriate item for inexperienced people to perform on our trees, and that, without any experience. And so, I'm asking if that maybe should be looked at, that list, and that should be eliminated either by the supervisors themselves, or by the city person, because of the way our trees have been treated lately. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue for the consent agenda?
Hi, Mayor. There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to council, close the consent agenda. Ms. Winholz, unfortunately, our public works director is not here this evening to address that, but I will follow up and let you know. Huh? Ms. Burlingame, do you have an answer on the marketing question, by any chance, for the transit service? Thank you. Sorry. Sorry to pull you up out of the...
No, that's okay. So, the marketing plan that was referenced is part of the update to the short-range transit plan. And that will be in process over, once the contract has started, will be in process over the next year. And I don't know if Executive Director Stra has a, I know there was a timeline, but when that would be completed. I think the idea was that would be done before the, not this upcoming '25-'26 budget cycle, but the next one. So, I don't know if, he's giving me the thumbs up, so that's the correct schedule at this point.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With that, I will, does anyone want to pull anything on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item E.
7E?
Mm-hmm.
Well, since he's pulling that, I would like to pull 7D.
7D and 7E. Anyone else? City Manager Kimball?
Yes, Mayor. I was just going to update you that our Maintenance Division Manager, Carlos Mendoza, is online, can answer some of the, I think, one of the questions the speaker's brought up.
I think Ms. Burlingame was able to answer that, so...
Regarding the trees.
Oh, the tree trimming. Thank you. I didn't see you this evening. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. So, as far as the tree trimming, the, the main focus for the prison work is to allow us to do weed abatement. As far as I've been here, we haven't used prison crews to do any tree work. And we don't intend to use them. Again, they're limited to the kind of work they can do.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. I appreciate that. Okay, you're pulling what item?
I pulled E.
E, and you're pulling D. So, ask for a motion to approve items 7A, or I'll make a motion to approve items 7A, B, C, and F, and I'll ask for a second.
I'll...
Thank you. Voice vote, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 7D?
Yes, I just had a few questions regarding the marketing. Who at the city will be responsible for that? And who will, how will we be able to know whether the marketing is effective? I, I have a few other questions. I can just tell you now, or do you want to answer them as I go? I'm not sure.
Which, which one? Thank you, Jeff.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jeff Stra. I'm the executive director of the San Luis Obispo Regional Transit Authority. With regard to marketing, the marketing would be handled by our marketing folks at our office. We have a full-time marketing and community relations manager who would handle the marketing. And I think she's done an exemplary job for, for the RTA and the services we operate. So, under this agreement, the, all the operation and administration of the services would be operated by the RTA. So, it would be handled by our staff.
Right. And then, but someone at the city is coordinating that, or no? I thought I read that in the staff report.
We would report initiatives to the city, but we, no, it wouldn't be handled by city staff themselves. It would be handled by us.
And so, I was just curious, who at the city is responsible for that, and, and whether it's effective or not? And I don't know if that's a question for you necessarily, or for our staff to answer. I just, I just want to know how that's going to work, because this whole, the whole reason to do this is, it's not financial, because it's actually going to be costing money, but it's, it's an effort to save, to free up time. And I just want to make sure that that's, that we're doing that. And it seems like there's still quite a few things to do. That, that's one question. Also, I'll go on. I wanted to know with the enhanced advertising, what happens if the ridership increases? Is that a further cost to us? And, you know, how, how will that work? And, you know, like, for instance, there's been interest in, in having concerts in, in, on the Embarcadero. If someone, if we chose to do, have a shuttle or a transit during that time, we're limited to seven events a year. So, that, that could be limiting. And how, how much will that cost us? I mean, I just want to make sure, be really clear that we're not going to be, this won't, you know, make, make things worse.
Ms...
And I don't know who should answer that.
I'm happy to answer. The, the, the way the agreement is written, and the way we've done it with the City of Paso Robles and the South County Services, as well as the county services, is we develop the budget and present that to the staff. Staff then brings it back to the city council to adopt. It's a level-of-service agreement. Number of hours, number of miles per year. We've identified seven potential special services that would be operated, for example, the concert or something like that. Those, those would be part of the budget, based on the hours and miles anticipated for that service. So, and you asked also about, I hope I answered that question. The first question about if ridership increases, it's a level of service. We anticipate having a service that's more reliable will bring more riders back on the service. It won't cost more to operate, it won't cost more to carry more passengers, because it's the same number of hours and miles that are operated. So, the cost per passenger would go down, because the, we'd spread out the costs over more riders.
Okay. And if, if more routes are needed, is that an additional cost, or...
Yes. So, it's similar to today's world. If you were to increase services on your services that are currently operated by the contractor, the contractor would, would require a more reimbursement for more vehicles operated. So, again, it's, it's a level of service. If you double the service, the, the costs would be based on the miles and hours operated, compared to the existing level.
Okay. Thank you.
And to just tag on to that, so if we are considering changes to the service level, that is something that would come back to the council for consideration and approval beforehand. So, it wouldn't be something that staff would just automatically tell the RTA to go ahead and do. So, that would be at council direction.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions on the revenue. After reading everything, it looks like that if we decide to go ahead with this transfer, we would be transferring $384,000 approximately to RTA. What is the ongoing cost after this first year? And I noticed in the budget, we have $2,147,000 in our transit funds. What is that money, and is that money going to be used to pay RTA in the up-and-coming years? I'm, I'm just a little confused.
So, for the, the transit fund balance, my understanding from the finance director that it was in the neighborhood of 100, oh, I'm sorry, 1 million. And so, part of that would be transferred over to the RTA. That would be used for either future operating costs, or capital costs related to any local matches, to grants that are needed for future, for future projects that would be happening. The, the first part of your question of the...
$384,000 in the proposal for right now.
Right. So, what would happen is each year, the RTA is going to be developing a budget based on the service level at that time, or any additional service levels that have come to the city council for authorization. And then each year, that budget would get approved for that level of service. So, we would know at that point if there was any increases to that amount. And those would be coming from existing transit funds that we would receive from the state, or part of the transit fund balance that has been transferred over.
So, does the city of Morel Bay get those transit funds, or does RTA apply for them?
So, once the budget is adopted, the RTA would be applying for those transit funds on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Burlingame.
Thank you. I move to pass, approve 7D on the consent.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Eccles?
Thank you, Mayor. With regard to item E, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the California Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation for in-make work crews. I've seen, I've seen CDC work crews out on the highway, but I'll be honest with you, I didn't know that we employed work crews here in the city. So, I just had a couple of questions with regard to that. Do we know how long that we've used CDC work crews?
CMC.
California Department of Corrections, CDC. So, and have we ever had an incident with the work crew? And are there any type of safety statistics? And the reason that I'm asking these questions is obviously, safety is, is paramount for our community.
Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you for the questions. So, the city has used prison crews for a long time, as the staff report states. I think it's been over 30 years that the city has been using prison workers. As far as incidents, I am not, not aware of any incidents with inmates. The way that the program works is that these are low-level offenders, and there is a deputy that is assigned to be with them at all times. They're also not allowed to be in certain areas. They're monitored throughout the day by both the guard and also the city employee that's there overseeing the work. And I hope I won't answer all your questions.
Yeah, that, that helps. I think the 30 years of speculation, it's not indicated in the, in the staff report. As long as someone on staff can tell me that we've never had an incident with one of the work crews, I'd feel more comfortable. If not, I would probably move to table this until we got some more data.
Mr. Schultz, in your tenure, was there any incidents over the...
Not during my time. There wasn't. I didn't know, I don't know how often we used them back then, but certainly there were no claims or any incidences, I recall.
Thank you. And I move to approve, or any other, yep, I move to approve item E of the consent agenda.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Our first business item is appointments to the advisory board. We're going to take a five-minute break. I would ask you to hang on. City clerk, are we going in the order that's on here? Yes, okay. So, first up will be the two applicants for the harbor advisory board, and we're just going to ask you for a brief introduction. Five-minute break. Thank you. And we're moving on to item seven, excuse me, 9A, and we're going to do advisory board interviews and appointments. We're going to go a little bit out of order, and there's only two seats open for the harbor advisory board, and they are specific to Morel Bay commercial fishing and marine-oriented business. So, if I can ask Marshall Witowski and Jeremiah O'Brien, we're not going to interview you. No, come on up. Come on up. Come on up. One at a time, or both of you to the microphone. If you could just give us, the council, real brief who you are within less than three minutes. No, sorry. Thanks, Jeremiah.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and city council, city staff. My name is Jeremiah O'Brien, and I've been on the harbor advisory board for a few years, and I am thrilled, and thank you very much for reappointment, because it's a passion. Morel, you probably know Morel Bay is a passion, and the fishing industry is a passion to me. So, I am very happy to be returning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Hello, my name is Marshall Witowski. I have a small dual-use federal and, sorry, dual-use defense and commercial clean energy consulting firm that I have in the, that I'm working from home here in Morel Bay. Appreciate the consideration of myself. I have experience in the Navy, and as well as other large Fortune 500 companies. So, I look forward to serving the harbor department. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for your willingness to fill those seats. And Dana, do we need a vote on that, or, yes, okay. So, I will move approval of the two couns, or the two candidates for harbor advisory board, and ask for a second.
One second.
It's a race. It's a race. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much. That was the easiest interview you ever did, right? Jeremiah, thank you so much for your years of service on the board and to the fishing industry and Morro Bay as a whole. It is greatly appreciated. Marshall, welcome aboard. Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to Trudy also. With that, we're going to go step out of order, and I'm going to invite the Recreation and Parks Commission candidates up to have a seat up here, please. Betty Winholtz, Drew, and Rachel. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, all three of you, for joining us. Just going to have a few questions. I'm going to kick off, and I'm just going to ask you in a very brief, one to two minutes, to just give us an introduction and your reasons for wanting to serve on the recreation advisory board. Drew?
There it is. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Drew Sedaris. I've been serving on the Recreation and Parks Commission for a number of years. I think it's a very important commission because we deal with, well, not only the most beautiful parks in the country, but programs that go from youth to seniors. And for the youth, it's a place where they can develop childhood friends that last a lifetime. And on the seniors' end, now that I'm retired, I know that you have to have things to look forward to, and a lot of these programs are, provide that for people, whether it's yoga or cooking or art. So, it's not all about sports. There's a lot of other programs that we cover, and it gives me a great sense of pride to be able to serve my community, and that's why I would like to extend my commission one more term. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Leonti, or Grace, I go by Grace. It's my middle name. I'm new to Morro Bay. I've been here about nine months, and my baby is about 18 months old. So, ever since I moved to Morro Bay, I've found that the way I've been able to connect with other moms, especially right after having a baby, you know, it can be lonely, and you want to make sure that your baby is well taken care of and has a safe place to roam. And so, I'm very passionate about making sure that, especially young parents, and I love what you said about having seniors be a part of it, too. Of course, everybody's involved, but from my perspective, thinking about the little babies crawling on the playgrounds, making sure that everything's safe is my passion. So, yeah.
Betty Winholtz, I've been on the Park and Rec Commission for just shy of one year. Currently, the chair. Have served in city capacity in the past on the city council. Obviously, trees are one of my passions, which is not necessarily under the Recreation and Parks Division, but certainly reconnecting recreation with parks, because that was split several years ago, and it makes it very difficult to have programs and not a park that meets those programs, or vice versa. So, one of my goals this year is to reconnect, with your permission, those duties that have been traditional with the Parks and Rec Commission.
Thank you, all three, and thank you for applying and being here and giving your time. I will go to my left first with Councilmember Landrum, questions? I mean Edwards, I'm sorry, you're both blonde. Sorry.
I'm getting grayer by the minute, Mayor. I think I'll just start with maybe Rachel, I think you said Grace you prefer on this question. What in particular interests you most about this particular board's work?
Yeah, so my background is I'm a critical care nurse. I became a wound care nurse later. But one of the best managers that I ever had, she pointed to me that when you walk in your room, you want to know what could go wrong. You want to know the top three things that could go wrong, and if you can prevent those, you're going to prevent like 90% of your problems. And so, that's kind of the approach that I want to take to parks, is if we can think about, you know, what are the top things that could go wrong here? And be basically putting a primary care approach to parks. That's kind of the way that I've envisioned it. I also really like foraging. I love like looking for plants to eat and kind of like, I'm a weirdo for plants, I love herbs, and so I just love pointing out to kids, like, did you see this rock? This is how like it was made with these clams. Like, I point out to kids all the time, this is abalone, this is, you know, the holy rock is made with these special kind of clams. So, yeah, I just, I love nature, and I love the idea of making a space safe.
Thank you. I think, Ms. Winholtz, you probably mentioned what you're most interested in, so I guess I'll go to Drew.
Oh, same question? What, why, what are my priorities? Oh, about the board? Well, it's about the programs mostly, the programs and the fact that we get so much support from the mayor and city council and the public works. But you've seen the programs that we administer, right? And we do a really good job because we have a good staff, and we encourage them to do a good job. It's, you know, it's community involvement, it's, you know, like the Christmas tree lighting, it's just wonderful, see the community to get together. It's a community-building thing. It's the difference between a town and a city, you know? We are a town, because we, every time you go, some more people honk at you and wave, right? And these opportunities we give people to participate in these programs helps build that sense of community, and that's really a big part of it.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the three of you for applying for the position. I've read the resumes, and I'm listening very carefully to your answers. I don't have any questions for you at this time.
Thank you. I'm going to skip, I'm going to go to the end. Councilmember LaFaye, any questions?
Just for Rachel, since you are new, have you ever been to a meeting?
Like a city council meeting?
No, the Parks and Rec meeting that you're applying for.
No, I have not.
Okay. What, how did you find out about this? Was this advertised? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I was talking with Zara, actually, and she, I think you sent me an email, because I was mentioning, I recently created a group called Parents for Park Safety in Slow because of some uptick in drug use that I noticed in Mitchell Park, and I was, I think probably ranting about it, and Zara was like, you should do something about that. And I was like, I agree, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
I do want to thank you all three for applying and reapplying, and however this works out, I just want you to know that, because this is a tough one, it's, there's just three of you in two spots, you're, you know, just the, I hope you'll still all, you know, yeah, continue working, and there's all kinds of ways to fit in. But I wanted to just quickly ask you three, this is Parks and Rec, what is your, this is just kind of a fun question, what is your favorite park in Morro Bay? And what is your favorite recreational activity that the city offers?
Well, I like Tidelands. I think that's one of the prettier parks. I like the concerts that we put on down, the Morro Bay seniors put on down there. Yeah, I'd say Tidelands and the concerts.
Mine is definitely Cloisters, because that's the one my baby gets hurt on the least, because he is so young. And also, you can always find fresh sage there. You're not supposed to take it, and I don't unless it falls.
I would say mine is Bayshore, because it's near my house. You can hear the birds both during the day and at night, and so I enjoy that kind of outdoor activity, take my dog, meet other dog people, and enjoy the aviation. Is that the correct word?
Thank you. We have so many parks to choose from, it's hard to know which one, actually. And we are very blessed in our community to have the number of parks we have, and each one of those does have something unique about it, and I visit all of them, although Bayshore not as much, because it's like kind of hidden gem. Thank you all for coming and interviewing this evening. We will do our voting and turn it in, we're voting at the end or right now? Perfect. Give us just one minute, please.
Do you write it down on a piece of paper? I didn't get one.
You...
No. Oh. Okay. Sorry. I got it.
And in our world, in our world, we would choose all three of you. Please know that it was much easier with the first group that there was only two seats.
Okay, I'll read the selections by each council member, and then we'll tally them up. So, Councilmember Eccles voted for Grace Leonti and Betty Winholtz. Councilmember Landrum voted for Grace Leonti and Betty Winholtz. Councilmember LaFaye voted for Drew Sedaris and Betty Winholtz. Mayor Protem Edwards voted for Drew Sedaris and Betty Winholtz. And Mayor Wickson voted for Drew Sedaris and Betty Winholtz. So, a very close vote. Betty received five votes, and Drew received three, Rachel received two. So, Drew and Betty, you've been selected to serve new four-year terms beginning February 1st on the Recreation Parks Commission.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Look forward to working with you, and I do see our recreation manager back there, so thank you for being here, Mr. Carmichael. They're all yours?
No, we're sorry.
Or the other way around?
I know, I know, well, you know.
Like to invite the planning commission applicants up, please. Thank you all for joining us. So, Mary's on line, who are we missing?
So, where is Mary?
She's zooming in. Mary, are you on Zoom?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you see me?
All right, thank you. Thank you for joining us. The same thing I'm going to ask all of the applicants to introduce themselves and just give us a very brief introduction of yourself, as we will be asking you many questions real soon. And I'll start down at the end there.
Pardon me, Mayor, before you start, so Sean Hanlon, is, do we have?
Sean, right there, no.
I believe we're missing one person, yeah.
Missing one person?
Yeah.
Who is that?
Sean Hanlon, I don't believe is here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so Stephen, start with you.
I suppose, if anybody here, you're the most deserving of an introduction from myself, because I have not served on any boards in this town. I'm here because of peer pressure mostly, honestly. So many people had heard my opinions about what was happening in this town and insisted that I go public with it, and so the planning commission seemed to be the place I wanted to be. I'm a general contractor, architecture buff, you know, just, I just, I want to see, I think this town is at a serious crossroads. I think there's a lot of changes happening, our demographic is changing. I think we're squeezing the golden goose on the embarcadero as much as we possibly can. I think downtown is underutilized. I think we need to be thinking vertical in our planning rather than lateral in town. I want to see, I want to see the locals on the embarcadero, I want to see the tourists downtown. I just think there's a lot of really underutilized parts of town, and I have some really strong feelings about them, and I think the planning commission is a good place to address some of them.
Thank you. Jim, Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and council members and staff. I will ditto most of what you just said. I'm a fairly recent transplant to Morro Bay as of May, but had my eyes on this community for the last 40 years. Spent the last 20 in San Luis, and it just took me a while to get here. By profession, I'm an architect, I'm a small business owner, and part-time developer at times. I've been to, you know, involved with long-range planning for many, many years in my profession. I've worked with many jurisdictions throughout the state, as well as Oregon, where I practice as well, and have been to numerous communities and sat in front of many planning commissions over the years, and have seen them organized and done very well, and also not so well. Sort of in my research, just for this position, spent some time looking at the plan Morro Bay, very impressed by the work that was done a number of years ago, and just would love to be part of the, part of the future, because that's sort of where my mind tends to go in my profession, is looking five and 10 years out, not only in my business, but as well as just the community in general. And I just, I love this place, that's why we moved here, and love to see it improve over the years, and there's so many opportunities, so many opportunities in the next five to 10 years. It'll be pivotable, pivotal for the future of this community, so just love to be a part of it.
Thank you, Jim. Tony? Is that on? It's not on.
Thanks. My name's Tony DeFazio. I'm a local resident of Morro Bay and a homeowner. I got my degree from Cal Poly Architecture in 2010. I've been practicing architecture for the majority of the last 15-plus years. I got back into residential construction a few years ago to learn more and to eventually get my general contractor's license. I'm currently working as a superintendent for a commercial builder on public schoolwork. I've been here since about 2003, when I moved here from Dana Point, California, another harbor town. I lived in Lewis Osos over the years, Morro Bay, San Luis Obispo. This is where I call home. I love it here, I plan to stay here. I'm very also concerned, I'm also concerned about the future of the city, and I do feel we're at a tipping point, and as a younger person in the workforce full-time, I believe that I can contribute a lot to the planning commission as well as the city.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mary Wackowski. My family has been in Slow County for five generations. I left the area to go to college and was a naval officer, so have professional maritime experience, and since then, served in multiple Fortune 500 companies. So, unfortunately, while I don't have architecture experience, I bring a business lens, most recently to my tenure on the harbor advisory board, and I'm hopefully, hoping to have more impact for the city on the planning commission, specifically with an eye towards the general plan and how we can be responsible stewards in the execution of that plan. I'm raising my children in Morro Bay and plan to die on Current Avenue, hopefully. So, also looking at the next general plan that goes beyond 2040, and how we can continue the unique character of the city for the long term.
Thank you very much. I will start with questions on my right. Councilmember LaFaye, questions for the applicants?
What's your envisionment of Morro Bay and the growth opportunities that we have here? How do you see that?
Mary, I'll start with you.
Yeah, I see, I think someone else mentioned Morro Bay being at a tipping point. I see that... I see that a lot with the circles that I run in in terms of, you know, there will be a shift from vacation homes and the percentage of our population that's elderly to overflow from a white-collar workforce that's working in San Luis Obispo 18 minutes away and purchasing homes in Morro Bay, which at, you know, over a million dollars for a single residential home will still be some of the most affordable coastal homes that you can see. So I see that with the change in the residents, we'll also have changing needs in terms of what types of facilities that population will be interested in. I think that we'll need to redevelop some of the existing sites, but my concern is losing sight of the character of the Embarcadero as we go through that transition. An example of that would be the height restrictions. One thing I've seen just from watching previous Planning Commission meetings and following along has been that I think there's an expectation from developers that you can pay your way out of the height restrictions. And I'm concerned that the Embarcadero is starting to feel more like a New York alley than something that is super welcoming and filled with light and giving viewpoints to the rock and the beautiful harbor that is mere steps away. So I'm really hoping to help the city evolve while also not developing at the expense of the experience.
Thank you. Stephen?
Well, I will repeat what she said about our demographic changing very much. I mean, I think our days of the 55 and older, 20% unoccupied residences in, in the area are kind of over. We need housing. We need housing for young families. We need to stop economic leakage out of the area. We need to, we need to take care of a lot of underutilized pieces of property the city owns. General Plan calls them underutilized spaces. The huge gray area between downtown and literal, and the gray area between downtown and the Embarcadero, you know, you stand at the top of Centennial Parkway stairs and there's, you know, six empty lots. And yet, we want to be integrating downtown with, with, with the Embarcadero. And nobody goes up and down. There's no cross in between those two. Nobody goes, none of the tourists go north of Dorns and none of the, none of the locals go south of Yoga. Everything's changing. The demographic downtown is very, very different. You need to go sit down there and, and on Saturday morning and Sunday morning on the street and you will see the demographic down there is very, it's changing a lot. It's a lot younger. We're going to have a lot of millennials, a lot of gypsy. I'm not sure exactly why they're here. That would be interesting to know. You know, it's, it's all, but we, we need a downtown design corridor. We need a historical preservation ordinance. The days of painting your building downtown, any shade of orange and yellow and pink and purple you want, I think need to be over. Lots of things. Where do I start? Anyway, what was the question?
You're okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I would echo some of what our former speaker said. You know, I recently, you know, I recently came to town and I'm a sort of habitual joiner and getting her, get her, get her involved. I got elected to the Morro Bay Chamber recently and I've been talking with some of the businesses in the chamber. And the number one driver of sort of economic stagnation, I guess if you will, is lack of housing. And that's not just true in Morro Bay, it's true throughout, throughout the state, especially sort of in, in sort of coastal communities, a little higher price. So I'm all for density, but smart density and upzoning where it's appropriate, where it's walkable, where it's livable. I see a lot of opportunities in town for that sort of gentle density, mixed use, reinvigorating some of our downtown core. And again, that reinvigoration of that downtown core would then bleed into the Embarcadero naturally and, like you said, make the Embarcadero for locals as well as, as visitors. I also think there's some just tremendous opportunity sites in the city, first and foremost, being the Vista, the current Vista site. I think that there's, it would be a missed opportunity to see a battery storage plant go in there for the long term. And I just think there's better visions out there for how that might be a win-win if that was relocated and that portion of town redeveloped for community visitor-serving interests.
Yeah, so future development is ultimately inevitable here. I think that what's important is to get ahead of it and to kind of guide it and so that it continues to preserve the character of Morro Bay. It allows for more housing. We do it in a way to where it works for the locals as well as the visitors, as well as new people moving to the area. And yeah, I think just being able to control it and set the pace for the future is very important.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum, questions?
Let's see. I guess I'll just ask, so there's been a lot of comments regarding how, you know, some of you feel about like the politics in Morro Bay. And I want to step away from that and, and ask, Morro Bay is a really beautiful place to live. What specifically is the, like you, you know, I lived here my whole life. I didn't really, you know, have that moment where I thought, oh, I have to live here. What, what made you want to live here? And Mary, I don't know, you'll have to modify that somehow.
Tony, we'll start with you. Thank you.
So when I was going to community college years ago in Southern California and I changed my career path from paramedic to architecture, my mom, my sister and I lived up here for about nine months when I was in third grade. And I just had all these memories of how open it was and how I could ride my bike around and the natural environment. And so when I chose a place to move to and go continue community college to transfer, I chose this area. I live here primarily for the natural environment that's here as well as the recreational opportunities. And I don't live here for the built environment. That's not what keeps me here. And then also our community. We have some great people around here. I've been in the area for about 20 years. I've got great friends everywhere, relationships everywhere I go. I see people I know and I think that's a very special thing about the Central Coast.
Jim, we'll go down to you. Thank you.
When I was a freshman in college at UCSB studying environmental studies and urban planning, I came up here on a road trip with my girlfriend at the time from the dorms, who's now my wife. And we took a drive up through Los Osos and then back Bay Boulevard into Morro Bay. And at the end of that weekend, we looked at each other and said, we should end up here someday. And it just took us a while to get here. But I think what, what I fell in love with was, is not only the natural beauty like Tony mentioned, but just the warm, the warm feeling of just people on the street. I mean, people wave at each other and that doesn't happen everywhere. And I've lived in a lot of places. When we were in Los Osos, that happened. You know, now that we're here, everybody in my neighborhood waves at each other as if you're driving by, if you're walking by. In San Luis, that didn't happen. So I'm just really pleased to have a community surrounded, you know, with very nice people and an awfully pretty place to live.
Well, I have lived in San Luis Obispo County. I moved here about 25 years ago and I have lived in every town south of the grade except Shell. And as, as, as a few of you know, I write a restaurant blog. I've been doing that for about 15 years and just gossip and various things about, you can tell a lot about a community by their restaurant scene. And I started noticing, you know, I obviously had to write about Morro Bay, started noticing things years ago, you know, mostly the opinion of the rest of the county about this town. And it puzzled me. It, I was very, very curious about it. And I started coming out here and started hanging out here more and more and more. 10 years ago or so, I just came out here and started really meeting people and getting involved and asking a lot of questions about the land use and how the city was progressing and everything. And five years ago, I moved here. We were spending a lot of time, we were spending more and more time up, up Slow Coast, through Harmony Headlands and Saro Alto and stuff like that. And I was just finding, let's just move out to Morro Bay. We've met so many great people out there. And, and like he says, it's different than living in Avila or Grover or Slow or, you know, downtown Slow or anything, or even Aurora Grande. It's, you know, you meet a lot of people in those places too, but here it's, here it's, you start meeting business people and everybody's really concerned about, I don't know, everybody's wired really differently out here and it's really familial and, you know, there's big families and, you know, we won't mention any names, but anyway. It's, it's a really interesting place and everybody's really intricate and everybody's got stories and there's so much history here. There's so much great history here and that's one of the reasons I'm kind of shocked that we don't have a, any sort of a downtown corridor, you know, that's, that's dedicated to preserving the historical buildings or whatever. We won't get started on the Morro Bay Elementary, that's some opinions there too, but anyway. I moved here because it's just a fascinating town and I'm not sure I'll ever move away because it's my favorite place now so far of anywhere I've lived in this, in this, I wish there were, sometimes I wish there were more to do, you know. San Luis Obispo, you live downtown, you can walk to bars and stuff like that. You can stay out till 10, 11 o'clock at night. That's pretty hard to get a dinner around here after about 8:30. But it's just, it's just, it's a beautiful place. And I would love to change a lot of that. I would love to see a lot more opportunities for, especially the locals, the Morro Bay locals and the nearby locals in the county, to more opportunities for entertainment and retail and places to spend money here in town.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, growing up here, I didn't appreciate it and went kind of as far as I could away to college and then with the Navy traveled the world and got to experience a ton of different places outside of Slow County, which only really showed me how great and unique of a place that I had come from. And so I decided to come back and raise my kids here. But as part of that, I looked at towns, you know, from Templeton and Napomo and everywhere in between. And the thing I think about is so unique about Morro Bay is the elderly population and just the volunteership and sense of civic duty that I think is shared by the whole community really makes it an amazing place to raise kids and be a part of. But then additionally, the planning that the city has done in terms of the water reclamation facility and kind of the future-proofing that we've done for water scarcity, the thinking we're doing about sea level rise and climate change are so huge. And then additionally, like with the recent fires, my friends are all having to take their kids, you know, out of school in San Francisco and the Midwest regularly because the air isn't breathable. Whereas in Morro Bay, I feel confident, you know, that I'll be able to raise my kids in a place where they can have fresh air. So I think the low prices of, of housing that we have comparatively to other parts of California and that access that we have to recreation and living on the beautiful coast, combined with, I think, how prepared we are for future challenges, that future global challenges and especially ones that California will face with water and fires and stuff like that, as well as the community and volunteership are all just things that make me feel confident that I want to stay in Morro Bay long-term.
Thank you. Councilmember Eccles?
Thank you all for applying for this position. You've all given thoughtful answers and I've read the resumes. Everyone is well-qualified. My question for you is this, what are your thoughts with regard to affordability of housing in Morro Bay?
Jim, we'll start with you.
Sorry, look for the light. It's a tough question because I, I, I work all over the place, all throughout the state and throughout the West Coast, and I see housing affordability is, is on the spectrum. It's, it's amazing to me that in Morro Bay, it's, it's more cost-effective to live than even inland a little bit. That being said, it's still a struggle. I mean, I've got three kids that don't live here and I, I don't know if they'll ever move back to the Central Coast because it's just very unaffordable to live here. In my profession, we design a lot of affordable housing, whether it's low-income housing or workforce housing. So I've seen it done very well. I would love to see, maybe not capital A affordable housing, but workforce affordable housing that is, is not only profitable for developers because they have to make a profit in order to do it, but is affordable for residents. And I don't think everybody, especially the millennials and Gen Z's, don't necessarily want to live in a large, single-family home. So I think that there's maybe a missed opportunity in terms of the housing imbalance on product type here that over time, I think would be beneficial to the city to explore that further.
I think, I think housing here, I mean, Grover Beach is just kicking our ass. I mean, anybody been down there lately? I mean, they're building and it's, it's, I mean, they don't have a waterfront, true, but it is, it is a beachfront and they're building how many units? And they're all sold out as fast as they can build them, block after block of block. Now, I'm not saying that's where our growth needs to be. We don't need it to look like East Culver City and stuff like that where they're putting up, I forget what they call them, those five-story things. But mixed-use downtown, mixed-use downtown, getting more residents downtown. That little tiny strip of land that's high-density residential housing halfway through the block on the south side of Morro Bay Boulevard, that's, that needs to be spread around. I know our emphasis here is on short-term housing. I realize, I mean, from living here and watching this, the politics in this region, everything's short-term housing, everything's heads in beds, everything's heads in beds. And I get that. We have plenty of beds. Our occupancy is not stellar. I told you when I started moving out, when I first started coming out here hardcore and meeting a lot of business people and a lot of restaurant owners and hotel owners and stuff like that, I started asking a lot of stupid questions. The first stupid question I remember asking a long time ago was, why is the lot below Blue Cell empty? So you can imagine that was quite an initiation there. The second question I remember very specifically asking is, why is the most beautiful stellar piece of property in the entire town, the only other bluff-top commercial property other than the Dorns, completely unobstructed, unbuildable, infrontable, I just made that word up? Why is it empty? You know, at the time, there was a, you know, Ken was on his way out and the wine bar had been there for five minutes and then it was Frankie for a while at Real City Office, great. And I pretty much consider it empty still. You know, and I said, hey, let's build condos there. And that was, that was the part that got it because this, everybody said, oh, no, 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 the city would never let you slice that thing up into condos, ever, ever. Well, why not? Because they need hotels. It's reserved for visitors, serving commercial, this whole area. There's no housing. There's no, there's not going to be any high-rise housing. It's all going to be developed out. And I would like to minimize the spread of the community so much and start building it up like a modern town downtown and get services downtown and get, get residences downtown.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, I actually think that Morro Bay does an outstanding job in terms of housing. I think with the mobile homes and trailer parks, we have like, I think, some good opportunities. I actually have an investment property in North Morro Bay and recently when showing the property to potential tenants, had several tenants remark to me that they thought it was actually a scam because it was a three-bedroom listed under $3,000 a month. So I think in terms- So, I think in terms of, you know, kind of the different options that we have, like, we are doing really well and have a lot of bright spots, I would want to study the issue more. I think one, just off-the-cust opportunity that we have would potentially be an assisted living facility in Morro Bay, or some way to enable our elderly population who may have retired to their beach house, but are unable to kind of care for themselves and stay in that situation, to enable them to continue to live in Morro Bay with assistance. And then that could potentially free up those single-family residential homes for, I think, some of the younger families that might be seeking out Morro Bay as a cheaper alternative to San Luis Obispo.
Thank you. Tony? Got the mic fixed?
Yeah, I just had to turn it on. I'm very fortunate to own a house here. I've thought about selling over the years and going somewhere else. But the reality is, if I sell here, there's no way I'm getting back in. So, I think the question of affordability is a very relative question. If you are a young family, and you grew up here, and you work in the trades, or you work in the service industry, a million-dollar house is not affordable. I know a handful of young families who have moved over the hill to Atascadero, and even, even further north, up to North County, because they just couldn't afford to buy anything here. The reality is, the majority of people, I think, that are buying are retirees from out of the area, and good for them. But, you know, a million dollars isn't very affordable if you're a young family unless you have help from your family. And that's kind of the reality of it, in my opinion.
Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the idea of keeping our character, we hear that a lot, and I think all of us up here consider that a priority for us. I think my question would be, is, how do we maintain the character while progressing, whether it's housing or goods and services? How do we do that comfortably? What are some of your thoughts about that, comfortably for the community? How do we proceed with that? And I guess I would maybe off to Jim first.
Great question. And I think a lot of that comes down to forward-thinking, a forward-thinking city putting together design guidelines. And, I mean, Plan Morro Bay, I think, is a, is a great document. There's a lot of great substantive direction in there on how the city should grow in the future. I think paired with design guidelines, and maybe some sort of inspirational ideas on how that can be done in other communities, or how that has been done in other communities, is really, I found to be a successful way to give people an idea that growth doesn't necessarily have to be bad. You can maintain community character with good design guidelines, and there's plenty of examples for communities the size of Morro Bay that have done it very well. And so, bringing those ideas to town, showing that it can be done, can help just people grab onto that vision.
Tony?
Yeah, I think a huge part of what gives Morro Bay its character are its people, not necessarily the built environment. I think if the built environment gets to a certain point where it's very fancy, and it's bringing in a lot of people with more money, a lot of the people that are here are going to be driven out. And a lot of the kids that you see down on Morro Bay Boulevard on Saturday and Sunday, hanging out by Shine Cafe and Buttercup Bakery, a lot of them are living out of their vehicles on property around here, or somewhere else. They're not necessarily renting houses in town because there's so little inventory. So, I think a big part of what I said earlier is, growth is inevitable. If we can control it, and anticipate it, and try and mold it, and shape it for the future the way we want it, while still being able to keep the people that are here that give Morro Bay its character, then I think that's more of an aspect of the character than necessarily the built environment.
For the record, I was not referring to the Shine demographic, but anyway. This is a really tough one, because I know the people of Morro Bay are very adamant about their cozy little beachside community, and, you know, the, the general plan or Plan Morro Bay mentions that many times. I mean, this is a really tough one, because we constantly hear screams about outreach and about growth of our tourism, which is so important to us. You know, we need to attract, while not alienating our bread and butter from the east, we need to attract a wealthier, higher-educated demographic of tourists from the north and the south. You hear this constantly from, from people in these positions. We want to see the people from the Bay Area and from Los Angeles coming in here for tourism. But where does that stop? And I know there's a lot of people in the Reed area, in the town, which, who are really concerned about property values. They don't want them to go up, but they want them to go up. I mean, one thing, you know, you're never, in order to achieve your goals, you're never going to make everybody happy. You just, you just have to, and plan and design, plan and design, plan and design, plan. You drive, you drive to other towns, you know, you drive through the, all the towns, Grover, Pismo, up north, Sausalito, Fort Bragg, Bodega Bay, places like this. And you go, you know, and you drive through town, and, and like I do regularly, and it's like, was that good planning? Well, that was good planning. Well, was that good planning? Well, that was good planning. Design is what holds a community together, and planning that design, it's a tough one. It's a really tough question, because it's really hard to balance those two items, keeping a character and still having modern buildings. And again, that's why we need historical preservation ordinance.
Mary?
Yeah, I, I would echo Jim's call for design principles. I think also just holding a vision of, like, what is a positive example of what we want to achieve versus something we would want to avoid. The immediate examples that come to mind for me are Monterey, and the cannery, and like, I think Monterey has done a great job of preserving kind of like the funkiness and character of their waterfront. So, I would hold them up as a potential example of a North Star to try to strive for. A counterexample, I think, would be kind of Sa, Santa Barbara State Street, and kind of just how it became very sterile in its character. And I think they've struggled a lot to kind of have tourist traffic on State Street. It's starting to come back, from what I've heard, but I think it's suffered quite a bit. And then in the design principles, I think just really understanding, like, what are one-way versus two-way doors, and having that as part of our framework. And what I mean about that is, paint, and the color of paint that you're putting on a building, would be a two-way door, because paint is, you know, easy to change, and something that could easily evolve over time. Whereas I would say that height is more of a one-way door, because once you build something to a certain height, I think it's unlikely that that height would come down, at least in the new, near future. So, I think taking the plan and then going a level deeper in terms of those design guidelines could be super helpful.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for answering these questions, and for your patience this evening. And if you'll give us just a few minutes.
Councilmember LaFaye voted for Tony DiFazio and Stephen McConnell. Councilmember Landrum voted for Tony DiFazio and Mary Witkowski. Councilmember Echols voted for Tony DiFazio and Mary Witkowski. Mayor Protem Edwards voted for Jim Duffy and Mary Witkowski. And Mayor Wickson voted for Tony DiFazio and Mary Witkowski. So, Tony and Mary each received four votes, supporting their appointment to the Planning Commission for a four-year term.
Thank you all very much for coming out this evening. We appreciate it. And we have lots of committees and advisory boards, and lots of action coming up with the Waterfront Master Plan, so hope you're all around. Thank you. With that, I'd like to invite the applicants up for-
Mary's a sharp girl.
Public Works. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. I look forward to serving you all.
Thank you. Public Works Advisory Board, thank you.
While you're gathering, I just want to note that a fourth application was received by, submitted by John Irwin for consideration of reappointment to the, to the PAB. He advised the Clerk's Office. He was unable to attend tonight's interviews due to a medical procedure that had been scheduled. It was our understanding he was withdrawing, but he advised the council that no, he actually would like to be considered. City policy allows for the council to make a motion to excuse that absence based on excusable personal difficulties. So, should the council wish to do that and consider it, that's under your purview to do so.
Thank you. And I would make a motion to approve, including his application, as we did receive it on time. He's just unable to be here and ask for a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for your patience this evening. We still have two more items after this. We'll start out with introductions, and just a very brief, brief, before we get into the questions. Brief, Paul?
Yeah, I'll go first. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, for the opportunity. I've been a long-term resident here in Morro Bay, and a lot of experience in public works. So, I was with the County of San Luis Obispo Public Works Department for over 27 years. And I've been on many committees here in the town, including the very first original Public Works Advisory Board. They had several different committees, and they consolidated into what we now know as Public Works Advisory Board. Recently, I was on the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee for its entire term, that it existed. So, I think I can bring a lot of experience and expertise to the, to the board. Thank you.
I can try this one. Is this on? Yep, okay. It's red. I'm looking for green. It's red. Hi, my name is Lori Beal. I'm living in Morro Bay, and I joined as a member of the Public Works Advisory Board, actually during COVID, so I remember doing the interview online, and didn't have to do the whole sitting up here on the dais. But it's, it's nice to be here in person, and just appreciate how far we've come since that time. I've just really appreciated the opportunity to serve on the board, and that really fosters that sense of community. For me personally, I, I value having, you know, some kind of volunteer activities, just in my general day-to-day. My day-to-day job is, I am an attorney, and I work for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and I found, just, I've just really learned a lot about the city, and I appreciate the hard work that the board, or the Public Works Department has undertaken here. And I think one of the other interviewees mentioned the really interesting, and I think great, balance that the community has between kind of preserving sort of the character and the, the sort of older nature of, of things, but also really forward-looking and planning ahead. And I think of the reclamation facility and water resource concerns as kind of one of those things. I do a lot of work that runs into climate change-type issues. So, it's, it's really, I think, forward-looking, and, and I just realized you said to be quick, and now I'm taking too long. But anyway, it's after, it's 8:30. I've enjoyed being on the board. I would be gratified if I were asked to continue in that capacity. And I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Betsy Godette Cross, and my only qualification for this is that I love Morro Bay. I love to learn. I love to be involved. I appreciate the fact that you all have an advisory commission and committee to, so you don't just, I mean, so you, you let the citizens become involved in things that go on in the community. I lived in Visalia for 37 years. I've only been here four. I went to one city council meeting in Visalia. I think all of you know me, I've, I've had personal contact with all of you. So, obviously, my involvement has greatly increased since I've moved here. And I'll be quick, and I'll stop with that for right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Echols, I'll start with you with questions.
Thank you all for applying for this position. I've read your resumes, and I'm going to defer to the questions of my fellow council members. Thank you.
LaFaye?
There's always been talk around, and as I walked, I walked the Embarcadero, I walked the streets just about every day, and, you know, you see the decay of our infrastructure. I would just like to have your opinion as being the actual advisory board to the Public Works, your opinion of that statement.
I'll start in the middle with Lori. Thank you.
If, if by decay, one of the first things that would come to my mind is roads, because paving is always a topic that comes up. And we've, you know, sat through, you know, presentations by the department, and they're, the budget for keeping up with that road maintenance is, is just lacking. I'm, I don't have a, a position in terms of how should the city allocate resources to address that issue, but it does seem to me that having a comprehensive and forward-looking approach in terms of, are we, are we looking, are we building for resiliency and making sure we're accounting? We don't want to just keep repaving the same pothole over and over. Is there an improvement we can make that's going to help that road last longer? There's probably other elements of infrastructure. I know with the storm drains, we had issues when we had the big floods a couple of years ago, and there had to be some emergency repairs done there. I mean, I think the city does a good job with its budget, but the fact is, there's just always going to be limits to how much that money can accomplish. I don't know if that's a satisfactory answer, but that's kind of my understanding.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I, you know, walk the streets myself. I notice particularly in the north part of town, the island streets are the worst. But you pick any street in town, it probably needs some attention. It's gotten to the point where it's almost gotten away from you, we can never really afford to fix it all. So, the paving that's going on right now, I don't think really was adequate as far as some of those streets that really needed. You're doing all of Main Street right now, and patching areas, and then slurring, seeing the whole thing, but you're not really putting on much asphalt, concrete. It seems to me, for the $4 million you put out for this last contract, that you could have done more asphalt paving rather than slurry seal and chip seal. The county regularly used to get its money, and then general fund money, to, to attend to most of the roads. We have some of the best roads in the state here. And paving was a high priority, depending on what superficial district we were doing it in. But Morro Bay, I think sadly, has, has gotten to the point where I don't think you could ever catch up with it. It's, it's pretty sad.
I agree with what Paul was saying. I agree with what Paul was saying, but I, I kind of look at the positives of bad roads. And I, that might be unusual, but when you don't have great roads, people can't go fast. Like where I live up in North Moro Bay, I, you know, on Zanzibar, I mean, it's, people just have to crawl. And, and I'm, I'm okay with that because I'm a bike rider and I, you know, I don't want somebody whizzing by me really quickly. And I, besides, one of the positives also is that we have great bike paths. And that, that's something that not every city has. I feel very safe going by, you know, along the cloisters and by the high school and all. So if you have, if you don't have the budget to fix the roads, then you have to look at the positives and, and do the best you can with what you have.
Councilmember Landrum, questions?
I, I guess I just want to comment on just the caliber of applicants that we've had overall and, and the brain trust that we have here in Moro Bay. And it's, it's really amazing. And I, I want to again, you know, it's especially after this recent election that we just had where we had three candidates that were, you know, unopposed. And it's, it's really heartening to see that there were so many people to apply for all of these positions. And, and just, I want to thank you all again. And I, I will, just in the interest of time, defer my question.
Mayor Protem?
So a capital assessment was one of our priorities, you know, to do a party list of them, if you will. And obvious ones are always looking at the roads and of course, our harbor. I'm just wondering, is there any one in particular outside of the, the big ones that we were always talking about? Is there anything else that you've thought about in your time living here that you thought should be a focus?
Who do you want to start with?
I'll start with Paul.
One of the things I've always considered, and I think that it's eligible for federal money, is your bridge over Moro Creek on Main Street. It's eligible for, I think they'll pay 88% of that. You could do a clear span cast-in-place concrete box girder post-tension and remove the center bent, which is causing some of the debris to hang up and causing your flooding. So it'd be a win-win. You replace the bridge and you alleviate some of the flooding at that location. Now, a lot of the bridges that I did for the county, I was able to get matching funds from the state. So pretty much every bridge I did in the county, we got 100% state and federal money to pay for, no skin off the county's back.
So I tend to bring up things that are just sort of more in my wheelhouse. So that's, you know, we all bring different things to the table. The Board and, yeah, Advisory Board traditionally has had a lot of engineers on it and I've, I've always found it kind of refreshing, no offense. But take it, other things, other things going on there as well. Anyway, so based on that, I tend to think about coming back to continuing on the path of building resiliency. And that could be, well, going back to like the paving and roads, I mean, is that everything we can do? Like can we be looking at some more, less impervious surface? Can we look at other ways to reduce stormwater runoff that's environmentally friendly? And not all of those kinds of methods are, are very expensive either. When we did have those awful floods, I know now it's two years down the road, so we tend to think, well, that's not going to happen again. And I, I would still consider projects that would help address those flooding issues. And, and there can be grant money available for those kinds of projects. I think we have done a good job of addressing in terms of the water reclamation facility, already looking at things like saltwater infiltration into the system. And you might have read, I think it was just last year, I think it was the City of New Orleans was having saltwater intrusion into their water system. So we, you know, I think we've got a lot of things going here that are, are good and working in that direction. And those are the kinds of things I tend to think about. What could we do to further, you know, just enhance our resiliency to climate change, to sea, sea level rise and just making the community as sustainable as we can?
Obviously, not being on this committee like these other two candidates, I don't know nearly as much as they do. But I am a, you know, I, I am a retired teacher. I can learn. I like to research. I love talking to people and I have no problem getting in front of people or at meetings or whatever. So I do have the capability to learn and be a, a good member of the community. One of, one of my thoughts about your question though was the roundabout. You know, I love round, a really well-designed roundabout, but when we talk about putting one by the high school where all the kids are walking, it makes me really nervous. Plus, I don't really, I've never felt that there is adequate space at that, that location. So that is something that I am aware about, that I, that I care about. I know this is a really little thing as a bike rider. When I'm riding along the cloister area by the park, there's a sidewalk and then there's a bike path. And people are always on the bike path, walking. I mean, it would be really easy to put a little symbol that you're supposed to be on a bike on this path and people walking. I mean, this is just some of the little thoughts I've had as I've been riding my bike around town. I'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate you being here and your service to the community in all various capacities.
Okay. Councilmember LaFaye voted for Betsy Godette Cross and John Irwin. Councilmember Landrum voted for Paul Donnelly and Betsy Godette Cross. Councilmember Echols voted for Paul Donnelly and Betsy Godette Cross. Mayor Protem Edwards voted for Lori Beal and Paul Donnelly. And Mayor Wickson voted for Paul Donnelly and Betsy Godette Cross, leaving Mr. Donnelly and Ms. Godette Cross with four votes each and appointment to the Public Works Advisory Board.
Thank you all. With that, we will move on to item 9B. I'll give Mr. Singwald a minute to get back up here. This item is request to form a waterfront master plan advisory committee. Not sure how we say that acronym. WAMPAC?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Airline Singwald, Community Development Director. So this item is a request to form the Waterfront Master Plan Advisory Committee, which will be affectionately known as the WAMPAC. So a very brief overview of the waterfront master plan update. So the current waterfront master plan hasn't been updated since it was first adopted in 1996. The city recently received a coastal commission grant for $750,000 to update the waterfront master plan. The waterfront master plan is a vision and goals for land use and circulation on the Embarcadero and the waterfront. I like to think of the master plan as essentially a, a general plan for a defined geographic area. So it's similar to Plan Moro Bay in that it's a policy level document, but it's focused on this more geographically defined waterfront area. The waterfront master plan update also will implement Plan Moro Bay policies related to sea level rise and master planning for the former wastewater treatment plant site as well as the decommissioned power plant property and also policies of Plan Moro Bay related to coastal access. So when deciding on formation of the WAMPAC, it's important to consider the various interests and expertise that will be represented on, or that would be needed to be represented on the committee. So as far as different stakeholders, commercial fishing industry, master leaseholders towards them, business entities, environmental stewards and community at large members. And then in terms of desired experience that could be useful on the WAMPAC, given the assignment is knowledge of the working waterfront, business and finance, engineering, architecture, environmental science and land use planning. So what will the WAMPAC's role be and what type of time commitment are we talking about here? So essentially, the WAMPAC would assist with, would first assist with defining the scope of work for the waterfront master plan update. I think the primary, primary goal would be to provide stakeholder input and policy direction on the waterfront master plan update. In terms of time commitment, they would meet monthly, occasionally, more frequently, especially when we're first starting to kick things off. And we'd be looking at eight to 12 hours monthly for reviewing staff reports and attending the WAMPAC meetings. And depending on kind of where we are in the process, the time commitment could be more. And I estimate another two to eight hours per month for meeting with staff and attending site visits as, as needed, depending where we are in the process. So the staff recommendation for the formation is a hybrid approach where we would have five members appointed from existing advisory councils. Those five members would be appointed by their respective committee and as a delegate of that committee to serve on the WAMPAC. In addition to those five, there would be one representative from the Embarcadero master leaseholders and three community at large representatives. And staff is recommending that council direct staff to initiate a recruitment and application process for those three at-large community members. And similar to the process this evening, council would make the, the final decision on those representatives. So next steps for the waterfront master plan update and how the WAMPAC would fit into that. So of course, tonight we'll get direction on how to form the WAMPAC. We are currently preparing an initial draft request for qualifications for the primary consultant to update the waterfront master plan. And we anticipate releasing the RFQ on the 27th and having about a one-month timeframe for responses. And if there is direction to do a community at-large recruitment for those three at-large representatives, we would propose to run that process concurrently with the RFQ for the consultant. And tentatively have a meeting with, on March 11th at a regular council meeting for the council to appoint the at-large WAMPAC members. And then first WAMPAC meeting in April and estimating that we would have a consultant contract ready for council consideration in April or May timeframe. So staff recommendation is to again confirm the makeup of the WAMPAC and initiate a recruitment process. Option one on this slide here is the staff recommendation. Again, that's five advisory council delegates, one master leaseholder and three at-large members to be selected through recruitment process. Couple other options, just to put them out there for council consideration is have all members be advisory council delegates. Option three would be all at-large members, which actually was the council direction for the general plan advisory committee. And then of course, option four, any other mix that council directs and we will implement that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. We'll start with questions to my left. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Singwald. I'm, I can't tell you how happy I am to see this come forward as fast as it did. I'm very happy with staff and thank you to the mayor and city manager for pushing this through and agendizing it. One of the questions I have would be what you're seeing, Mr. Singwald, as timeframe and possibly maybe just kind of bare bones scope of work so that people who would be applying for this, whether they would be at-large or, you know, one of our advisory board members, what's, do you have any ideas on that right now?
So overall timeframe for the waterfront master plan update, I can tell you the timeline that we put in the coastal commission grant is a two-year timeframe. Thankfully, the, the grant does include provisions for a time extension if, if necessary. And based on other past similar, you know, planning assignments, I think it could go from, you know, two to, two to possibly three years overall timeline, start to finish. And then you mentioned also kind of a general scope of work. So again, kind of the, the primary objective of the waterfront master plan update is to implement general plan policies that currently call for an update of the waterfront master plan, to do master planning for the former wastewater treatment plant site, also for the power plant property. Of course, there's already some work, master plan work that's been completed for the Vista project and that would be kind of reused as much as possible and folded into the waterfront master plan update. Another example of, you know, components of the waterfront master plan update is there's been discussion on past redevelopment projects on the Embarcadero of converting the street end parking lots on the west side of the Embarcadero into public plazas and having a parking relocation plan for that. So the waterfront master plan would include a, a plaza plan and also a parking relocation plan. So those are just some examples of like the major kind of core components of the waterfront master plan update scope.
And then I know that you also mentioned future, the sea level rise study as well as parking. And I'm just wondering, those would be two separate studies, correct? And not in this group's body of work?
So yeah, the sea level rise analysis, that was one of the components of the, the grant from, from coastal commission or the scope of work for the, the grant that we received. And that would be a separate study, but a lot of the, the results of that study would end up being incorporated into the actual waterfront master plan update document.
Last question. How do you foresee us council receiving updates? Do you think that would be something on a regular meeting or some sort of progress update? How do you foresee that would happen with this group?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. It's a very significant, you know, planning document update. And I'm sure there's going to be a lot of community interest, a lot of council interest in it. I would have to kind of talk with the city manager on exactly how we want to keep the council and public informed, but I would just imagine that we're providing fairly regular updates to the, the council and planning commission and probably harbor advisory board and other, you know, key advisory committees as we work through the plan update.
Thank you, Director Singwald. Many of us in the community have what I would consider consultant trauma that has occurred over the last couple of years. There's been plenty of discussion about how the city utilizes consultants and a distinct opinion that we've overu, overutilized consultants or misused consultants when certain things could be done in-house. Saying that, and at the same time recognizing that consultants play a valuable role- Saying that, and at the same time recognizing that consultants play a valuable role, my question for you is, what do you, how do you envision interacting with the consultant? And how, do you have any idea of what portion of the $750,000 will be spent on consultants?
So, good question. So the, the grant application, it does specify the amount that will be used for consultants versus to reimburse the city for, for staff costs. I don't have the exact breakdown, but I can tell you that the majority of funding is set aside for, for consultants. So with that said, I want to, I mean, the waterfront master plan update, it's a, it's a major undertaking. And the more I talk with community members and different, you know, stakeholders in the community about this update, the more ideas I hear about, well, the waterfront master plan update should include this, and this, and this, and this. So we'll be able to go through that $750,000 pretty quickly. So with that said, I have been thinking a lot about how we can strategically use that, that funding and use, you know, city staff time and just work to craft an RFQ where we are, I guess, getting the most cost-effective arrangement between using staff time, possibly hiring separate consultants, where we're not paying one primary consultant to do all of the work and add on overhead to that cost, but looking at, you know, strategically and cost-effectively, what's the best arrangement to stretch this $750,000 as far as possible and get the most that we can out of this grant.
Director Singwald, I, I can't remember the, could I see the timeline that you had up there again?
Sure, and this is really just the timeline for the, I would say, the first, first quarter of the, the process. So really just from now until we have a consultant onboard.
So, so the, you picked the, the WAMPAC would be picked first. And then would they do any work towards, I mean, I guess, piggyback, backing off of what council member Eccles just said, would they be able to kind of like maybe go through some of the things, you know, just eliminate or, or highlight some of the things that we want to?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Landrum. So the way I envision this playing out is I want to get an RFQ out soon so we can get started on the process. And the RFQ that we would release in two weeks from now, on the 27th, would include the kind of basic core components that have to be included in the waterfront master plan for the coastal commission grant and for the general plan policies that this plan update is, is implementing. And then at the same time, we would be going through this process to recruit the community at-large members and then coming back to council to basically finalize the appointments of the, of the WAMPAC. And then that first meeting that we have shown here in April, the WAMPAC, really at that point in time is when we'd be refining the scope of work, actually, even put that on the, the slide here. First WAMPAC meeting, refining scope, April 2025. And that would be where we would get input from the WAMPAC on additional items that should be included in, in the scope, and then be able to negotiate that with the consultant for the final contract that we bring to council later in April or in May.
Okay, and this, this, you're asking tonight, just to, on the, how, how the WAMPAC is chosen, and so can I see that, the list of options again, too? It wasn't in the, in my packet. Okay, so I wish I had that here, because...
So essentially, I would think of it as, on, you know, one end of the spectrum, you have, you know, an option to form the WAMPAC to include all existing advisory council members. So we'd go to each of the existing advisory bodies and have them delegate a representative to the WAMPAC. The other end of the spectrum is all community at-large members. We do community-wide recruitment, interviews, and the council selects the representatives. What staff is recommending is sort of a hybrid approach, where you have five appointed from existing advisory bodies, one from master leaseholders group, and then three at-large.
And in either of these options that you've come up with, those are all nine members, no matter what?
So we chose nine because that's what we had for the GPAC, and that was, I understand, a successful advisory committee on that, that planning effort. Of course, that's not set in stone. It would be helpful to have an odd number of representatives, and we don't want it too small or too large, so nine seemed to be about the, I guess, the Goldilocks option.
Okay, thank you.
To follow up in Jeff's comment, what exactly is the, the nine members going to be doing? Are they going to be working with the consultants? Are they going to be asking questions? I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused. I mean, if you're hiring a consultant, usually you have one person managing that consultant, so you're going to have nine people managing that consultant? I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, let me, yeah, clarify that. I think that, that is a good question. I mean, so staff, my office is managing the consultant. Again, there are a lot of, you know, different interests on, on the waterfront who have expertise that, of course, we don't have, that we don't expect our consultant is going to have as far as just knowledge of, of the waterfront. And so we're going to rely on the WAMPAC to provide, you know, stakeholder input from their unique perspective and experience. And also, when we, we'll meet monthly with the WAMPAC at least, and when there are just key policy decisions to make, we'll make reports, and we'll get direction from the WAMPAC on which direction to take. Essentially, it's a steering committee for the plan update. While we're talking about kind of roles and responsibilities, I want to be clear, too, that the WAMPAC isn't replacing the planning commission. So the waterfront master plan update will still go to planning commission, and planning commission will make a recommendation to council, and council would make the final decision before it goes on to coastal commission.
Thank you. Public comment is open on this item?
Betty Winholz, again, maybe I'll, going out on a limb here, but I think the question of composition is real important, and I would remind the three of you who are on the DDD, we had eight or nine members, and that was kind of unruly. And it was really difficult, in my opinion, to do work because the table was too big on physically, and some people talked over other people. If you had something more like five or six people, I think that's a real working group. And I think that's maybe what the water reclamation committee was. It was smaller. Look at your group here. You've reduced all of our advisory boards down to five. And I would suggest, without being rude, I think, is that your representatives from each of your advisory boards are your community representatives. You don't need three at-large people. So I think you could get by with five or six people. And so I would encourage you to go for the middle suggestion that was made, that, that you do that rather than make your group too big. My second point would be that, and I think it bounces off of Mr. Eccles' point, about consultants. It, it seems to me we would want the group, the committee, to do some legwork first. Say, this is who we are, this is what we want. Go talk to harbor advisory board, go talk to Wrenckin Parks or whoever we think is involved in that area down there, and bring back what it is that we want, not ask the consultant to tell us what we want. Does that make sense? And, and not that they would, and, and I understand that the consultant understands the requirements, the legal requirements of both the grant and, and the law, but it seems to me that would become secondary to what it is we want, and that based on what we want, then, then you hire the consultant and have him put our stuff into order.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
Hi, Mayor. We have one raised hand in the queue. Judy Lynn, you are allowed to talk now.
Thank you, council. And I just would like to say that I agree with Betty as far as getting some boundaries and standards put together as, that reflect what the residents of Morro Bay want before we give the, these consultants just free rein. Because, I say this because I have seen a very well-done presentation that was presented by Cal Poly that involved pretty much doing away with vehicle traffic down to Morro Rock. And I'm assuming that this waterfront committee will be dealing with something like that. I could be wrong, and I hope Mr. Singwald can correct me if I am. But that's a really big deal for every single resident in Morro Bay, and they should be consulted before anything is talked about regarding putting water all the way around the rock again, bringing it back to its original state, you know? I won't go into it any further, but that, that is something that community members have been talking about wanting. They want us to park on the Embarcadero and take a trolley down to the rock, and that is a really big change that needs to be discussed if it's going to be considered as part of this waterfront project. And then as far as the number of people on the committee, I like the number nine. I think it's, I think it's good to have that, that number because you have, you have a lot of residents, and that way you have more people who can talk with residents and get the feel of what they want. So nine is a good number, and thank you for the work you're doing on this.
AGP, are there any more raised hands in the queue?
There are no more raised hands in the queue. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back, close public comment, and come back to council. Mr. Singwald, I, I hear Ms. Winholz's comments about a lower number. There's the idea maybe of a compromise, maybe in the middle of seven instead of nine, but then listening to the speaker just now, it reminds me that the eight to 12 hours a month for some people will be challenging, and not everybody is always available. So then if you have one or two people absent, then your committee starts dwindling down to very few people. So I would be concerned about that. I, I, I can get behind supporting the nine. Maybe seven would be, you know, more manageable. And the comment also, I 100% agree with that the advisory board members are our citizens. And going out to select, for me, three citizens at large becomes a popularity contest, and I really like to avoid that. I like the idea that you recognized consideration of someone from an environmental protection group, you know, we have the NEP here, we have Sea Otter Savvy here, we have other groups, or someone from tourism and business, whether it be a chamber member or a tourism bureau member, or their director or somebody, to, to provide some of those. But I think that we have the citizens from these boards. I also would be interested in, in hearing from the other council members about the idea of two planning commissioners on there versus one, is it's a planning document, and their, their wheelhouse is this. If we were to do nine people, I would be supportive of, of their consideration of two planning commissioners. I like the idea that with these commissioners or with these advisory board members, I think that we'll get a lot of input because they're going to go back to their board every month, and I would think this would be something that will be integrated into all those advisory boards on a monthly basis. They are going to choose their representative, and hopefully, as those representatives from their boards step up for this position, they'll realize the time commitment, too, because it is two years, and we want the continuity of hoping that they will be there through the two years. Once they make the commitment, sometimes people have changes in their life, and, and it takes away from that, and then you're kind of starting over again. So just some of those things because of the timeline. The consultant, I, I understand the comments and the need for the consultant based on the, the grant funding. You highlighted in the discussion part of this that consultants are to define a high-level scope of work for the updated master plan within the grant, grant parameters, and that once it's formed, you know, so I think that making sure that once the WAMPAC's formed, but I think you're hearing that we want to make sure that there's a balance in that consultant run versus the advisory members and the members of this committee running it. And I'm going to leave my comments there for right now and go to my right.
I, I will agree with you about the, it should be run by the community rather than the consultants, and that's a tricky, in the past, it's been a, that seems like it's been the opposite way, so I think we really need to make sure that we do everything to make that not the case. I can see, having been on the, having been on the downtown design district, I can see the, the simplicity of having less members. And, you know, I'm, I could, I can see it both ways. I mean, one, one option I can think of to solve the problem of someone not being there is maybe there's a, an alternate within the advisory board for that, to, to help with that, but, yeah, I, I, I like, I like the idea of five, but I don't know. Convince me otherwise.
Councilmember Laffey?
Yeah, I definitely think probably we should get them from the advisory boards if you want to. I mean, I don't really have a difference on how many, seven, nine, whatever, but I think NEP and maybe Sea Otter Savvy, I met the president of the Sea Otter Savvy, I came down, I'm actually going to get certified. So those are the people that, you know, I think would be very beneficial, but going out to the general public, probably not. I, I kind of agree with you there.
Thank you. Having served on the downtown design district, I, I agree with some of the comments that a larger group, nine folks, can be unwieldy and more difficult to manage, just in terms of having every voice heard, and there were time constraints. When you meet for two hours with nine people, it's hard for every voice to be heard. So I, I think seven is a good compromise. I could agree to five as well. So I think five members from each advisory body, and then we just need to figure out who the last two would be. And I agree with the popularity comment, comments, popularity contest comments. If, if we can find a defined category and get it done with tonight, I'd, I'd certainly appreciate that, too.
Councilmember Roberts?
I definitely would love to get it done tonight, for sure. I'm, I'm apt to agree with going with seven. I, I do like the idea of having one representative from each of the advisory boards. And I, I do, however, agree that there should be, well, I'm kind of thinking that maybe we might want to even take a look at somebody from the downtown area, possibly a business owner or somebody of that nature. If we're looking at connecting the two, we've had conversations about that, or even, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, but the estuary program, I don't know if you said that already, sorry. I am getting tired. Those are just some of my thoughts offhand. I think I would feel more comfortable with seven, just an obvious, for the obvious reasons of if somebody can't make it, I think it's important to have them there, so.
So I'm hearing, I'm hearing the majority supporting seven.
Yep.
And that would be the five seats here, five seat, five advisory boards, and then an interest in having someone from an environmental group, whether, whichever one. I, I would like to, to see if we can direct staff to reach out to them. I don't think we need to, to solicit them and come back and interview. I think that if we narrow it down, you know, the, Mr. Singwald comment on that, are you comfortable with that?
So just to get clarification, so would the council direct which environmental group, or we just?
Well, NEP is right here.
The NEP or, or Sea Otter Savvy, either one of them. Both those two groups come to, to mind because they're both very active in our bay as far as environmental. I'm not sure what the NEP's availability and commitment would be to this long-term waterfront master plan, and, you know, probably look at them as maybe Plan A and, you know, first, and if not, a smaller group like the Sea Otter group, or someone who might fill that role so that we have that environmental representation. And then I probably would look to... And then I probably would look to the business community, which was one of your recommendations. I mean, the fishing community is going to be represented through the Harbor Advisory Board. And most likely, I would think, you know, someone from the boating because there's a, and I would just want to make sure that, I would call out right now that the Harbor Advisory Board does have waterfront master leaseholder. I would not want two waterfront master leaseholders. So whoever the rep is from there, you know, should not be filling the duplication of the role of that one opening, just for clarification. So, I mean, the business community, you could look to the, to the, visit Morro Bay or the Chamber. Not necessarily the Chamber Director because I want it to be a volunteer person who has a business, so.
Wait, I'm just confused. So it's, what you're saying is the five advisory boards, the master leaseholders?
No, that's, oh, that's six. Yeah, you're right. So only one more. There's only one more, you're right. Oh, the NEP, okay, yeah, got it. Okay, the NEP, sorry. Let me remove that last one, okay. The NEP, yep, thank you.
Yeah.
I counted wrong. I was adding an extra one, sorry.
Well, I mean, we don't, we could go that route, too.
Yeah, but then you're at eight and it's an odd number.
You don't want to.
So are we good with that?
Yep, I think so.
And again, just to reiterate the stipulation that someone from the Harbor Advisory Board is not a master leaseholder and that they don't double up on the master leaseholder.
Right, I think Mr. Singwald got that. And then is there, Mr. Singwald, maybe you can address that question about an alternate, are there alternates on these or is it just strictly, you know, is there an alternate then from those advisory boards that could fill in if somebody wasn't there, or does it just stay strictly with those individuals?
So I think that's council's discretion on the formation. I'm not sure if the G-PAC, Toronto Plan Advisory Committee, had alternates. Yeah, so yes, the recommendation would be for no alternates.
The recommendation is what?
Would be for no alternates.
No alternates, okay. It would be hard for them to get up to speed.
Yeah.
And then I would like to kind of clarify the direction I'm hearing for the formation for the record, so one planning commission member, one harbor advisory board member, one CFAC member, Parks and Rec.
Public Works.
Public Works, and then the NAP.
Embarcadero Master Leaseholder.
Master Leaseholder and?
NEP.
NEP, okay.
NEP or other?
Or other environmental.
Right. So not a separate, because there's also discussion about a business owner representing, okay.
Can I just clarify with the NEP, is it someone that, like a staff member from the NEP or is it a board member?
Well, it could be either. It could be at the discretion of the NEP to make that decision.
Okay.
I don't think we want to dictate.
I just, I just, no, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And just to be clear, so council's delegating authority to staff to work with NAP to identify their representative?
Yeah.
So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 9B with the direction given to the Community Development Director and ask for a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Singwald, appreciate it, look forward to the next two years of your time and dedication.
Two or three, he said.
Two or three, yes, thank you. We have one item left. It is 920. City Manager Kimball, do you want to move the item or do you want to endeavor beginning?
It's really up to the city council, and I have a presentation, contains 13 pages, and so if we cannot go through it today and we can possibly do a special meeting next meeting. Yeah, we can, it's really up to the city council.
I think this is a pretty important topic, and to, I'll be honest with you, I'm a little tired myself, so to listen to it right now, I hate to say it, I know you prepared it, I would kind of like to do it on later date.
Yeah, I think we had a long public comment this evening and kind of pushed the schedule out. Pardon? Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, I'm fine with delaying it so we can give it more thorough consideration.
Yeah, I, okay. Thank you. And with that, we will delay and reschedule 9C, and maybe we all just move it up higher on the list at the next meeting, and I know we already have an impacted list. With that, thank you, everybody.
Are we going to do future agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was ready to just get out the door. Future agenda items.
I would like to suggest that for the next council meeting on July, January 28, that we agendize contacting, having the city contact the school district to express our interest in the Morro Elementary School property and ask for a 90 to 180-day window, to do this on behalf of our residents that we've heard loudly from, with the understanding that no city budget is involved. In addition, to direct the city manager to immediately communicate with the school district that we have agendized this item.
I'm a no. I'm a no because we've already reached out to the school district and our staff's already reached out to them to try and facilitate a informational meeting, and so until we have that scheduled, we don't know what we're asking for. We've already submitted a letter to them, asking for, we've already submitted a letter.
But there's a concern that, I mean, we don't know what the school district is doing and who they're talking to.
But that doesn't mean they're going to tell us that.
I'm not asking them to tell us that. I'm saying that the time is.
Well, you have one person to support you, anybody else?
Councilmember Leonard, would you repeat the request, please?
You want me to read it again?
Yeah.
For the next council meeting on January 28, that I would like to agendize contacting the school district to express our interest in the Morro Elementary School property and ask for a 90 to 180-day window to support our residents with the understanding that no city budget is involved and that we additionally direct the city manager to immediately communicate with the school district that we have agendized this item. And the, it's to, you know, to allow time for us to, or our community to, you know, come up with some kind of another alternative.
Thank you. I'm supportive of the notion, and I'll even look to the city attorney, because there are a lot of specifics there, so I don't know how many specifics we can tie into.
I want to also share that, to understand that to do that is going to push other items out again, and because we already have an extremely full agenda because of being this first meeting in February, we have a short meeting because we're out of state, so the meeting is impacted already, so as long as you understand that if you have support for that, we're pushing all the items like this to the end of February, so just.
Yeah, it's just.
There's a question to the city attorney.
It just seemed that there was a lot of specificity attached to that. I'm all for bringing this back as a future agenda item in a prompt manner, and I say that because of the response from the community, and I feel that I owe that to the community. But just the way that it was phrased, and this is part of my learning process, I don't know how much we can add to a future agenda item in terms of that amount of specificity.
Well, let me clarify, let me clarify the 90, are you talking about the 90 to 180 days?
Everything.
That's like to give the community time, you know, from the, for the school district to, you know, that's to get the school district to agree to that timeframe.
My understanding would be we would discuss that when it came back as an agenda.
Yes, you're not making a decision tonight, but that's basically the agenda item recommendation would be for that. That's what she's proposing is at the end, but the end is undetermined, but the agenda item would be an agenda and discuss the interest in the property without a budget and requesting a 90 to 180 days to allow the community to explore, I don't know if it's purchase, but explore options.
Options, yeah. I mean, this takes a lot of vision, I realize that, but I don't see how we can.
So is that a consented agenda item?
No.
That's a business item, so something else is going to be pushed out. Know that there's four business items scheduled for the next meeting right now, and this will make five, so we won't, we'll push something else out.
And, I mean, maybe this is a question for city manager, I, maybe I was reading through everything that we were hearing tonight, but I thought we also were talking about having some sort of discussion already on this coming up.
Yes, that's, we are coordinating with the school district to have a information session on January 30. I just confirmed with Director Singwald to talk about the property.
Correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager Kimball, that's a community meeting, it's not a city council meeting. So even if city council members go, I mean, there's no, it's just for the community to talk to the school district. There's no city, that's just a, it's just like a community meeting.
Yes.
It's not a council meeting.
Can I have a point of clarification? Even if we approve this agenda item, why do we have to, do we have to really talk about it? Can't we just approve it like?
We're trying to figure out what the item is specifically.
Do you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, in other words, do we have to really get?
And you really shouldn't.
We're not.
This is just a future agenda item.
Yeah.
So the future agenda item has, I think it's been clarified enough to where I think staff could do a report and bring that back and present it to the council and decide whether you want to approve it or not.
Can we do it under consent?
No, he just.
No, because, I mean, it's somewhat of a controversial issue still, you might not want to ask the school board whether to take 90 days to 120 days. So that's going to be your decision, so I would not, but that, I mean, you could put it on the consent agenda, I assume. But I, in my vision, it would not be on the consent agenda, it would be a business item.
So we have. Next meeting will be jam-packed, and if we get all these school people in here again, I mean, it's, that's, that's.
Put it on consent?
What's that?
Why not put it on consent?
I assume there was going to be a discussion on whether to do it or not, and so that's the choice, I guess, of the mayor and city manager under our rules is to where that's placed on the agenda. My initial reaction was no, it would be a business item, but that could be completely wrong.
So we need three? Is that the way it works? Yeah, so I support it.
There you go. Any other future agenda items?
I have one, and this one's not an urgent one, but it's an important one. I mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, the porta potties. I would love for staff to analyze the use of porta potties in the city.
Okay. That might be able to go to P-Web first?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I just, I've had a lot of constituents telling me they don't like them, so I'd like to agendize it so that we can.
I'll second that. Myself and Jeff talked about this. I actually went and counted the porta potties that are still in use right now. There's four of them.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else? Chief McCray, again, thank you to your team for their coverage down in Southern California. Please let them know that we send our best to all of them and everyone down there and wish them to stay safe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned.